Hold on one second. Okay, it's gonna take a few minutes, there's 24 people, so.
Just ask that question if anybody out there with his name.
Hey, it looks like everyone's in.
Okay, pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We just asked that everyone please silence all devices and move to a quiet location. Keep your devices muted until you're called upon to speak. Background noises are very distracting and they do not allow for a clear record of these proceedings. The 48 hour notice is required under the Open Public Meetings Act. Has been met as notice of this meeting was emailed on June 1st, 2021 and published in the Asbury Park Press. The poster and the poster copies been placed on the bulletin board in the borough office and a copy can file with the borough clerk. Mr. Advento. He's not here. Mr. Wade.
Here.
Mr. Refusos excuse this evening, Mr. Cretelli.
Here.
Ms. Burnell.
Here.
Ms. Rosenberg. Ms. Saracene.
Here.
Ms. Leahy.
Here.
Mr. Mayor.
Here.
And Chair Rosenberg.
Here.
And John Eric is still not here. Okay, also President Mark Hietrick, attorney of the board Gerald Frieda, board engineer and Christine Bell are board planner.
Board engineer, planner. I want to make a message statement first, please. This meeting will be recorded for transcripts and purposes. No member of the public shall yell from the audience or speak out of turn or we disrupt the official record. Once the Board of Adjustment accepts service on the application, the applicant proceeds to call the witnesses. The applicant or their attorney will first examine each witness. Next, board members will ask questions and cross-examine witnesses. Finally, members of the audience will try to cross-examine the witness. Only questions related to testimony given. This is not the time when members of the audience will give testimony, present evidence or make comments. Once the applicant has finished presenting all evidence and all witnesses, any interested member of the audience may then make comments, present evidence and testimony. There'll be a five minute time limit, five minute time limit for each audience member to speak. As requested, comments should not be repetitive. That's very important. All members of the audience intend to give testimony must do so under oath. The applicant or his attorney may cross-examine you upon your testimony. The board mails the calls on witnesses, present its own evidence due respect to any application. It may require more than one hearing to complete an application. The application will be then carried to a future date if we announce the conclusion of this hearing. The Board of Adjustment will attempt to join the meeting on a reasonable hour. Therefore, in no circumstances will a witness be called to testimony after 10:00 PM. Thank you. Any, no cor- any correspondence, Miss Christine?
No.
Okay, approval of the minutes. I make a motion, we approve the minutes of May 18, 2021, special meeting.
Second.
I second it.
I got Mr. Mayor is my second. Ms. Burnell.
Yes.
Ms. Leahy.
Yes.
Mr. Wade.
Yes.
Mr. Cretelli.
Yes.
Ms. Saracene.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
And Chair Rosenberg.
Yes. Make a motion, we approve and adopt the minutes from regular meeting on May 2021.
Second.
Mr. Mayor is my second. Ms. Burnell.
Yes.
Ms. Leahy.
Yes.
Mr. Wade.
Yes.
Mr. Cretelli.
Yes.
Ms. Saracene.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
And Chair Rosenberg.
Okay, in reference to resolutions, we have four resolutions. Saving resolutions.
The first one is being held over. We had some escrow issues that we had to resolve. That should be scheduled for our next meeting.
Okay, so we're not doing A.
We're not doing A.
Okay, resolution 2021-15 denial of bulk variance related to construction performed without first acquiring zoning approval. Block 21, lot 10, 501 Park Place Veteran Relocation Project. Second.
Yeah, second.
I'm sorry, Mr. Cretelli was my second.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Burnell.
Um, I hate to say this, but I'm not sure what I'm voting on.
Voting on denial of the resolution.
Okay, yes.
Okay, Mr. Wade.
Yes.
Ms. Saracene.
Yes.
And Chair Rosenberg.
Yes. Make a resolution, approve the variance warnings for Thomas J. Cone, block 58, lot 10, 401 Main Street. Second.
Oh.
I'm sorry, who is my second?
Pick one.
Oh, Mr. Mayor's my second. Um, Ms. Burnell.
Yes.
Mr. Wade.
Yes.
Mr. Cretelli.
Yes.
Ms. Saracene.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
And Chair Rosenberg.
Yes. Resolution 2021-17 approval of used variance and bulk variances associated with reconstruction of primary dwelling. Kevin and Dawn Giafi, lot 34, lot 3, 511 McKay. A second, please.
Second.
Mr. Wade is my second, I got you that time. Mr. Ms. Burnell.
Yes.
Mr. Wade.
Yes.
Mr. Cretelli.
Yes.
Ms. Saracene.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
And Chair Rosenberg.
Okay, applications. Mr. Beckman, you're here.
Good morning, Mr. Rosenberg, Chairman Rosenberg.
Before, before I say anything, in reference to this hearing, I have to accuse myself. As I live within 100 feet, I'm a noticed resident. And Mr. Mayor will take this case, so.
Mark, before we get started, Mr. Advento has joined the meeting. We need to swear him in so he can participate.
Okay. So, I'm looking for him.
He's got the blue and white checkered shirt. He's raising his hand. He's waving. John Advento is his name.
On the second screen.
Second screen, yeah. Okay.
John Eric, say something.
How are you? Blue check shirt.
Okay. Okay, I didn't know there was a second screen. Okay. Are you on the first screen now?
He's not on the first screen.
Okay, there we go. Okay, so John, you have your hand raised, so just repeat after me if you will. I state your name.
I, John Eric Advento.
Do solemnly swear.
Do you solemnly swear?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I all bear true faith and allegiance.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States and in this state.
In the United States and in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform all the duties.
And justly perform all the duties.
Of office as a member of the zoning Board of Adjustment of the Borough of Bradley Beach.
Of office as a member of the zoning Board of Adjustment of the Borough of Bradley Beach.
For the remainder of a four-year term.
For the remainder of a four-year term.
Expiring on December 31st, 2023.
Expiring on December 31st, 2023.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Before, I gotta say something before you. Mr. Advento did not hear the first half of 501 Lake Terrace.
He was sent the video and he has certified that he has watched the video and is familiar with the case.
Just so we have that on the record.
I watched the three hours, 44 minutes and 23 seconds of that video.
What a great way to break in.
Okay, Mr. Beckman and Mr. Mayor, thank you.
So, Mr. Beckman, as Mr. Rosenberg indicated, he was noticed for this application. He'll be stepping down, but he'll be able to participate as a member of the public.
Understood. Do we have any, just a curiosity, are there any alternates on that are available, just?
Yes, yeah, we have a full board.
Okay.
You're good.
Just wanted to make sure, great, thank you. Jeffrey Beckman, the Beckman Law Firm, Ocean Grove, New Jersey. I represent for this application, Tara Goldstein. The property address is 316 Ocean Park Avenue in Bradley Beach and it is identified as block 23, lot 24. Ms. Goldstein is the owner and occupant of the property. She's here to testify and I also have here to testify our architect, David Feldman, who is also on.
Okay, so why don't we swear Mr. Feldman and Ms. Goldstein? And Ms. Goldstein, your first name is, I'm sorry.
Tara.
Tara?
Yes.
Okay. Along with Ms. Bell and Mr. Frieda, everybody raise your right hand, please. And Mr. Feldman, do you swear from the tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth to tonight's proceeding?
Do.
I do.
All right, thank you.
I do.
Okay, great.
Okay.
Thank you, and Mr. Hietrick, we do have jurisdiction, I presume?
Yes.
Okay, great.
The board can accept jurisdiction.
Thank you. So I'll have Ms. Goldstein testify first and then I'll have Mr. Feldman testify about what's being proposed as far as the architectural plans. Ms. Goldstein is here with me at my office, so you'll see her on my screen as well. Ms. Goldstein, you are the owner and occupant of 316 Ocean Park Avenue? And you are a year-round resident there? Just give a little background about when you bought the property and how long you've been there.
Can you hear her?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah, all right.
Yes.
So, I bought the property in 2016 and I've been living full-time down in Bradley Beach for three years. This, this July, I'm raising my daughter and, you know, at the beach, this community, we love it. And we've been living in the house as is since we bought the, you know, since I bought it in 2016. Over the past year, working from home like most, full-time and not planning on going back into the office full-time at all, at full-time. So, I'm using a lot of my additional space as office space. So it's just becoming clear and apparent that the current structure and the space that we have is just not really conducive to full-time living. The kitchen is very small, so it's hard to entertain at all, you know, if it's not nice weather. And just the bedrooms, you know, my daughter's bedroom is, it's just, it's just as she's growing, the bedroom's getting smaller and smaller. So, I'm looking to just create a home for us for, you know, for the next 10, 20, 30, 40 years, planning to stay here pretty much forever. And I think that's basically it and I just feel that we're excited about this next chapter.
And you hired Mr. Feldman to be your architect for the, for this application. When you did that, some of your concerns were associated with the existing lot size, is that correct?
Yes, when I, when I originally bought the home, it was going to be a part-time residence for us. But like I said, three years ago, we moved down full-time and, you know, obviously I knew what the lot size was when I bought the home. Didn't think it was going to be a full-time residence. So, that's when I reached out to Mr. Feldman to help me kind of reconfigure the existing home in the lot size.
And one of the variances that was identified is associated with the proposed addition and how close that is in proximity to the shed, is that correct?
That is correct.
Can you just describe for the board what that shed is and how it works between you and your neighbor?
Yes, the shed is a shared structure that's basically cut basically 50% down our property line. It's two separate doors, we have our storage for each of our, you know, things. And we basically share that shed. It's a structure that's was on the property when I bought the home and is, you know, shared with my neighbor. And my neighbor and I basically share, you know, I guess, the backyard. They have part of the backyard, I have part of the backyard.
With the shed, you're saying?
With the shed, yes.
Um, I don't have any other questions for, actually, I'm sorry, one other question for Ms. Goldstein. You've also looked at your neighborhood, correct? When you're identifying this and you're not proposing any parking.
No parking.
Your lot's only 25 feet wide?
That's correct.
So, the limit because of that, you wouldn't be able to put any parking in here anyway and then put a home on it as well?
No, no, there's, 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 yeah.
Not without other variances.
No, but there's no room in general, unless like, you know, unless like buy the house next to me.
And the structure's been there since the earlier 1900s, correct?
1914, the house was built.
And you've looked in your neighborhood, what, what's the parking scope or parking scape of the neighborhood?
Yeah, so obviously on our block, as, as the, as, as the lot sizes are narrower, I would say maybe 50 to 60% of the blocks does not have off-street parking. From the Madison Avenue kind of towards the middle of, I guess, Ocean Park Ave. And as you get closer to the beach, there are some lots are larger and they do have off-street parking.
And with respect to the proposed design, you're not looking to increase any bedrooms, correct?
Nope, still two bedrooms, um, no, three bedrooms, I'm sorry, and one and a half baths.
Great. No other questions for Ms. Goldstein at this?
Any questions on the board? Mr. Beckman, you want to, you have more witnesses?
Yes, so I have Mr. Feldman is our architect.
Just before you go there, questions for the board, what about questions from the public?
Sorry.
That's okay. Any questions from the public regarding this? See none?
Not seeing any.
All right, Mr. Beckman?
Okay, great, thank you. Mr. Feldman, you've been hired by Ms. Goldstein to be her architect for this application, is that correct?
Yes, I have.
And what are your licenses in the state of New Jersey?
I'm a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey. I've been practicing within the state for approximately 25 to 30 years. I hold close to 15 other licenses up and down the East Coast and I've testified before this board and other boards throughout New Jersey in the past.
Okay, and you've been qualified as an expert in architecture by this board?
I have.
This is big, man, we accept this call.
Thank you. Mr. Feldman, when you sat down with Ms. Goldstein, what was the scope of the project?
Her concern was, being that it was now a full-time residence, she needed a more functioning kitchen as well as a more functioning bathroom and bedroom for her daughter.
And being a 25-foot width lot with setback requirements from the side, there's some limitations with that?
That is correct.
And so what, what was the focus of your, the renovations and the proposed addition?
So, the existing structure is currently a three-bedroom house, one and a half bathroom. Combination, living, dining when you walk in and then the kitchen located to the back. We didn't have any room to go out the sides, either, either the east or west side, given the fact that the east side has an existing five-foot setback, which is conforming to your ordinance. And the west currently has a three-and-a-half-foot setback, which is also conforming to your ordinance. In our initial chart, we indicated that that was non-conforming because we thought that it was a five-foot and a 10-foot setback. And your engineer brought it to our attention that it's actually on the narrower lots that are 25 feet. It's a 10% and 20%, which would then translate to two-and-a-half feet on the west side where we, we currently have three-and-a-half feet. And on the east side, five feet would be required, which we meet as well. So there was really no room on the east and west side to extend the dwelling. So, with that said, the only option was to go out the rear, which actually worked out because it was where the existing kitchen was and that's what we were expanding. And her daughter's bedroom was upstairs to the, to the rear or north end of the property, which we were also expanding. Of the three bedrooms that currently exist, the mass, the current master bedroom is remaining intact and as is. And the, if you'd like, I could share my screen and pull up my drawings.
Why don't you testify? I'll share my screen if that's all right? That way you can testify, not have to worry about moving anything around.
That's fine.
How's that sound? Which, which page do you want to start with, David?
If you, if you go to our page, which is indicated as P1.
Yep, okay.
And you go down to the plot plans? Or if you, if you want to go through the zoning chart first?
Yeah, we could do that. Let me, let me make this a little larger. Okay.
So, so there's a couple of existing non-conformities. The first being the minimum lot area where 5,000 square feet is required. We currently have 2,500 square feet and we can only provide 2,500 square feet. In terms of the minimum lot width, where 50 feet is required, we have 25 feet, which is an existing non-conformity. The depth of the lot is conforming where 100 feet is required and this particular lot is 100 feet as well. Getting back to the setbacks of the principal building, the front yard setback is 25 feet. We currently have 14.7 feet to a second floor, to the first floor, I'm sorry. And then there's a porch that extends 10, roughly 10 and a half feet in front of the, the, the house. The side yard setbacks I, I previously spoke about and the rear yard where 25 is required currently exists 48.91 feet, which is conforming and we are providing 36.41 feet, which will still conform. She does have the, the shed that was talked about earlier, which is right on the property line to the west and approximately 2.1 feet off the rear property line. I'll also in a little bit get, get to the issue of the proximity of the addition to the existing shed. The maximum building area where 35% is required. The property is currently at 23.8% if we do not include the covered porch. And the proposed would be at 32.1% if we do not include the covered porch. The maximum building coverage, including the covered porch, currently is at 33%. And we would be creating a new variance at 41.2% with the addition. The total impervious 60% is allowed. We're currently at 48.3 and we would still be conforming to that with the addition at 58%. The maximum building height where 35 is allowed, we're at 26.8 and our intent is not to change that height. The storage shed in the back where 25 is allowed, we are.
David, before we get to the storage shed.
Yeah.
Let me just ask you a couple of quick questions if I can.
Yeah.
As far as the front yard setback issues, we also did a lot averaging survey and it's, the lot averages are much more in line with what the existing condition is to the dwelling?
Yes, yes, that, that is correct. So, so it's, I don't have those numbers exactly. I believe you have those numbers, I have them in front of me.
I will, I will bring that, I believe I have brought that up.
But yeah, the, the average setback is, is well with, within.
For the average house setback according to the lot, and I brought that up on the screen, according to the lot averaging survey is 12.5 feet.
Yes.
And you indicated we're at 14.7?
14.7 to the first floor and 10.7 to the second floor overhang, which overhangs the porch a little bit.
Okay, so, so we're really at 10.7, but it is somewhat in line. It's, it's not 25 feet like the ordinance says, it's, we're much closer in line and we're not touching anything.
That is correct, there's no change to that.
Okay, let me bring your plan back up. And then the other question I just wanted to ask you, when it comes to impervious coverage, you calculated all of the proposed, and I'm showing on my screen, all of the proposed patio and everything when you did that calculation, correct?
Yes, we did.
Okay, now if you can continue with the shed.
Okay, so the shed where 25 feet is allowed, the existing shed is, is 12 feet in, in height. At this point, it might make sense to go to the existing structure drawings.
You want the?
Which would be AB1 and AB2.
Okay, here's AB1.
Yeah, so, so these are the as-built of the existing exterior of the home. Pretty modest, pretty typical of, of a lot of the homes in, on that street in, in terms of style. Like Mrs. Goldstein mentioned, this home was built in 1914. And what we're trying to do is keep with that style and not, not affect the appearance or the architectural appearance from the front, from the streetscape. And I'll explain what we did with that once we get to the preliminary drawings. If you want to go to AB2, which are the existing floor plans.
Existing?
Yeah. That's, yeah, so, so what you could see is, there's a Yankee basement, partial, partial basement that's currently accessible from inside the home. It's under what we have indicated, the dining room to the front, under the living room and to the rear, under the kitchen is crawl space. You then, as far as the first floor, have a walk-through, a, a living room that currently exists on the first floor. You walk through that room to the dining room and then to a very modest kitchen breakfast, half bathroom, with the stairs that then go from the kitchen down to the basement and from within that dining room, a set of stairs that go up to the second floor. There's also an existing wood deck currently, and I'd like to make note of that now because that deck currently extends off the face of the rear of the building, 14.2 feet. Which then puts it with respect to the garage, a distance of 12.2 feet. Our intention is to remove that wood deck and to put up a addition out the back, which would only go out 12.6 feet, which is going to net us a positive of 1.1 foot 8 inches. That will be further away from the existing garage. And I believe your ordinance requires a 20-foot setback. So, currently we're at 12.2 with the deck. When we do the addition, we're going to be roughly 13.10. So, again, an increase in the distance between a structure that's there and what we're proposing. Going up to the second floor, you could see there's three bedrooms. The master bedroom is approximately 12 by 15, 3. Our new design is not going to alter or change that dimension in any way. The bedroom in the middle is currently 7'7" by 9'6". Again, there's not going to be any change to that bedroom size either. The real issue is to make more of a functioning bathroom upstairs. Move the laundry upstairs and expand Mrs. Goldstein's daughter's bedroom, which is currently 9 by 11. With that, if we could go to the proposed floor plans. And if we go to. And if we go to. Okay, so if you look at the 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 proposed first floor plan. Um, there's really no change at all to the existing front porch. There's no change to the living room and there's no change to the existing dining room that that's currently there. The half bath is going to remain intact. And what was the existing kitchen area is now going to be a new dinette area. Um, behind the dinette area, what we did was we expanded out the rear. Um, twelve twelve feet, six inches or twelve foot, six and a half inches, I believe. Which is where the new kitchen is going to be located. Um, with a access door to the rear with steps, uh, a platform and then steps going down. And if you you can know, you could see just behind the uh the addition of the kitchen. There's a dotted line and some dotted steps, which were the the original deck. And steps that currently exist, so you could see how we're bringing that back in. Um, we're also raising the ceiling in the kitchen. Um, because the ceilings are are relatively low. So, you know, again, when the when these homes were built. Um, and and they were built for cottages and and not really year-round residents. A lot of what they did made sense, but for somebody that's trying to raise a child there now. Um, and works from home, given the COVID situation. You know, there's things that need to be slightly adjusted. Uh, going up to the second floor, you could see that the existing master bedroom is all intact as previously uh um stipulated. The bedroom in the middle remained the same uh with no change. And then the existing bedroom now became a much more functional bath area. Um, with a double vanity, um, that that's more functional for the the residents. The existing bath area that was there is now going to be the new washer dryer uh location. Going back into that twelve and a half foot by sixteen foot addition. Is where we're going up into Mrs. Goldstein's daughter uh daughter's room. And that room now went for, which was a room size that she had of nine by eleven. Is now going to be thirteen, three by twelve, six plus the closet space. So, you know, it's 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 a nice functioning bedroom for for a child that's going to be growing up. It's it's certainly not by any means exorbitant. Um, we gave her two nice uh closets. And a little built-in area for for a potential desk. Um, the reason for the step up into that space, which is accessible off of the hu- the hallway. Is again, because we wanted to get a little bit more height into the kitchen area. Um, the side walls on the house um have roughly, I I believe, a six foot ceiling uh plate height. And so I'll show you in elevation. Um, we're proposing a dormer that goes out to the east of the uh east side of the property. Um, right there, um, and that's just to max, you know, to give more head height. Uh, at a a proper eight-foot head height ceiling within the uh within the daughter's bedroom. So what we wanted to do from the front elevation is keep the the roof line um pretty consistent. Um, going all the way back into that addition, except for where the dormer occur occurs. And in my opinion, the the dormer is a is occurring roughly fifth forty uh thirty-six, fifty, forty-six. About fifty feet back off the street line, so it's going to have a minimal impact uh to the streetscape and and to the design of the existing home.
And that dormer's not creating a half-story or anything under the definition?
No, it's no, it's not. So if if you go to the rear elevation and and you put your your cursor over where the eve is of the dormer. Uh, the 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 rear elevation.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah, so where that uh eve is, that plate height, that's going to go straight across and that'll be a flat ceiling. And then it'll slope down on the west side as indicated on the uh architectural plans. Um.
And the west side will be where that little desk area that you were referring to.
The the right, so so the west side, if it if you look at the dimensions on the west side. That plate height is roughly um five feet, so the back of the closet would be set at five feet. Uh, and then the and then the closet would come out and we'd set the the shelving at five feet. So if you look at the right side elevation, you could actually see where the steps go up into the addition to give her a little bit higher kitchen area. Um, and then that's where the dormer in the room is in order to create an eight-foot ceiling within the bedroom.
Uh, going back to the distance between what's proposed in the shed.
Yes.
So uh sometimes some of those ordinance are related to uh fire access, emergency vehicle access and those kinds of things. In this situation, when you have a twenty-five foot lot width, is that a uh a concern?
So if you go back to the the plot plan, either mine or the engineers. You could see on the east side as well as the west side. Uh, there's really no access for the um vehicles to access the property. So anything that would would be done in terms of an emergency or fire would have to be on foot up both of those property lines um regardless. Um, so in terms of getting a vehicle around the back and and having to turn and make that radius. Um, that would never occur. And the fact that we're going from, like I mentioned earlier, a a and a net increase of one foot eight inches. Um, would only benefit the situation if if ever need be.
Great, um, and just a couple uh final questions in Mr. Um Frida's letter. He has some general comments regarding compliance conditions. That's in uh on page, starting on page three or four and continuing on page four or four.
Yeah.
Uh, number four, are there any issues with adding those comments to the plans?
Uh, no.
Okay, and it. Okay, thank you. I have no other questions.
Any questions from the board for Mr. Feldman? Great, um, any questions from the public to Mr. Feldman regarding the application?
No hands raised? No.
So I think just, I so I guess you're getting, you're giving a net plus to the spacing between the shed and proposed structure. And that's to be looked upon as a positive. Other than that, there's not much more you can do. Is that correct?
Is that a question for me?
Yeah, with probably, yes. I'm sorry.
Um, yes, I would agree with that.
Sure, you have any comments on this fact that that's being uh, we're now putting a solid structure rather than the deck?
Um, they've done a really good job minimizing the impacts on the site.
I agree.
Uh, they've they've taken every precaution they could possibly do and still have an addition that makes sense to them. Um, so I really don't have any other comments, no.
Thank you. Seeing no other, hey, what's next? Questions, comments? Nothing, nothing left?
Comments from the public.
Right, thank you. Any comments from the public? Is it time for any comments regarding this application?
I have a Deborah Heffernan with her hand raised.
Is Heffernan?
Hi.
Please be sworn in.
You have to appear with video. Sorry.
Thank you.
State your name and address, please.
Um, Deborah Heffernan, three eighteen Ocean Park Avenue.
Next door, put your right hand, please. Do you swear from to tell the truth, the whole truth on this, is tonight's proceeding?
Yes, I did.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, so I just wanted to comment that um I've I've been living here for twenty-two years and um, have befriended Tara over the last several years, her and and her daughter Molly. Um, we're happy to have her improve and expand on her house. And so I just wanted to show my support in that um this investment that she's making in Bradley Beach. We're really happy to um have her be, you know, be with us and be happy and be in a home that works for her and her daughter.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Uh, no more, Chris?
Nope, and I have a lot of people that are not participating with video, so I'm not quite sure, but. No, I'm seeing none.
Any final questions, comments from the board? Seeing none. I'd like to make a motion to approve the application as proposed. With the stipulations and the engineering letter. As agreed to.
I second that.
Right in.
One second, sorry. Uh, okay, I'm Ms. Arasine.
Yes, I approve. I think that um I appreciate the fact that this house hasn't been built up. Um, and there's measures being taken to preserve the current style of the house and keeping with the neighborhood.
Good luck. Mr. Wade?
Uh, I also vote yes. I think it's a good fit for Ocean Park Avenue building and they did a great job playing together. Good luck with it.
Mr. Patelley?
I vote yes. I think it'll be an improvement to the neighborhood and wish you the best.
Ms. Leahy?
Uh, yes, I agree as well. I think it's an improvement and they're being fair and considerate to the rest of the block in the neighborhood.
Ms. Burnell?
I vote yes. I'm happy to see that it's not being knocked down, but it's being renovated.
Mr. Advento?
I vote yes as well, and I appreciate all the work being done to really minimize impact as as Mr. Frida shared with us, the precautions. And I respect the full-time living here in town and making do with with the the house that you have. So all the best, good luck.
Yeah, and Chair Mayor?
I, yes, I, and comments as already stated. Congratulations.
Thank you, everyone, really.
To Rosenberg, you're on.
Thank you. Mr. Beekman, you were still with us, I guess.
What's, I'm sorry, Mr. Rosenberg, what'd you say?
You're still with us, you got another.
I I am still with you, yes. Yes, if I can have about two minutes just to close this one and open the next one.
Not a problem.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, everyone.
We might as well sit here while I make an announcement to the public, starting July, July fifteenth, that fifteenth meeting?
Yes, it is.
We're going to be back in Borough Hall. We'll have live, live meetings.
Okay.
Mr. Beakman, whenever you're ready.
Thank you again. Jeffrey Beekman of the Beekman Law Firm, Ocean Grove, New Jersey. On this application, I represent Valerie and Michael Carabin. Uh, the property address is six zero four Madison Avenue. Um, and I believe that I have our clients on the line. I also have our architect, uh, James Connor. And I have our engineer and planner, uh, Joseph Koshuba. Um, they will all testify on behalf of the application. Just a quick overview of the application. Um, thi- this is an existing two-family home. Um, and what the applicants are proposing, um, and let me just um be clear on something. This application is is under the prior ordinance. It was submitted prior to uh, the ordinance change with the limitations on these smaller lots. Um, so we have a fifty by fifty foot lot. Um, and the applicant is proposing to basically go straight up um from what's existing. And keep it within uh for the most part, the same footprint that is existing, as will be testified to by the uh architect as well as our engineer. Um, and we'll go over the variances that are required, including the fact that it's an existing two-story uh two-family. And uh that we're proposing a a two-family as well, even with the changes. So, Mr. Chairman, let me just address uh an issue that Mr. Beekman raised. Um, and Mr. Beekman, you're you're referring to the newly adopted ordinance twenty twenty-one dash five, correct? That is correct, and I probably, there's a couple of things in the in the letter uh that I had mentioned to Mr. Frida. Um, that I probably should go through after you speak with. Yeah, sure. So, um, Mr. Beekman's position is that his uh uh client uh submitted the application prior to formal adoption of that ordinance. Uh, so, um, and the ordinance, um section seven, which is the last page of the ordinance, says this ordinance shall take effect immediately upon one adoption. Two, publication in accordance with the laws of the state of New Jersey. And three, filing of the final form of adopted ordinance by the clerk with the Monmouth County Planning Board pursuant to NJSA forty colon fifty-five D dash sixteen. So all all three events have to happen. So, um, be- before, um, it's officially an ordinance. My uh research discussions with uh Christie, um, we've determined that the uh Mr. Beekman's uh applicant submitted the application before all three of those conditions I read uh were in fact satisfied. So under the law, they are permitted to um proceed with the application under the prior law. Uh, and that's how the um board should handle this application. And Mr. I've, Mr. Frida um is aware of that um that application. And he will, he will guide the board regarding his engineer comments based on that prior ordinance. Thank you. Okay, so uh just to go over uh Mr. Frida's letter, I I believe there might only be two items. The first item is identified on the third page. It is section three B on the third page of his letter. Uh, and that's related to balconies uh on the rear of the dwelling. So that was not in effect under the old ordinance. Uh, the applicant is proposing a balcony uh on the third or the half-story. Um, and they'll testify about that matter. Um, as to why they're requesting that variance and and the limitations of the property as to why that is justifiable. The second item um is related to the size of the lot. And the the two and a half story uh limitation. So when the ordinance was changed on a lot that doesn't meet a four thousand square foot lot size. Uh, you can no longer put a two and a half story, but again, we submitted this application prior to the ordinance taking effect. Uh, so that is not applicable to this application. And the applicant is proposing a two and a half story and thirty-two foot high um height dwelling above the existing footprint. I believe those are the only two items. Just for the board's benefit, where the the last com- last area you mentioned, where is that in in there? Oh, I'm sorry, yes, uh, that is on page four of six, section E at the bottom of the page. Thank you. Thank you.
And if if I may, Mr. Jerry.
the rest of the letter stands as written. And it's just those two issues that we have to look at from the, the prior ordinance that would have changed under the new ordinance. So that the board's clear.
Mr. Frida, just to verify so everybody knows, what was the building height allowed before the variant in the old ordinance?
Well, the, the, that's what they're going to testify to under, under this. So they'll testify to all that moving forward, and then the board can react to the testimony.
Okay, Mr. Beekman, Mr. Kittredge wants to share, swear your people in, please?
Yes, so I have Valerie Carabin, James Connor, and Joe Kuschuba.
All on video? Yep.
Just looking for Mr. Kuschuba.
Over here.
There you are. Okay. All right, if you would raise your right hand, please, Mr. Kuschuba, Mr. Connor, and it's going to be just Ms. Carabin, correct?
No, Mr. Carabin's here too.
Also, okay.
Okay, thanks.
Along with Ms. Bell and Mr. Frida, each raise your right hand, please. Do you swear from the tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so nice proceeding?
I do.
Beekman, continue.
Yeah, thank you. Valerie Carabin, I'm going to have testified first. So Ms. Carabin, you are the owner and occupant of the property, is that correct?
That is correct.
How long have you owned this property?
Since January of two thousand and fifteen.
And how long have you resided in this property?
Um, just since October of twenty twenty.
And you sold another home and moved into this home?
Yes, we sold, we had a five-bedroom house in West Belmar. So we are just downsizing because we're a family of six, but our children are grown, so some of them have moved out, so we were just looking to downsize. And since we already own this property, we thought that made the most sense.
And this property has always been a two-family?
Yes, some, from day one, it's been a two-family.
And what's the setup of the existing structure?
So it's bottom floor, top floor, two-bedroom, one bath in each unit.
Okay, and you're proposing to make some renovations and maintain that four-bedroom configuration, correct?
That is correct, yes.
And what, what you're proposing is to maintain a one-bedroom unit on the first floor? Correct?
That is correct, yes. So we'd like to maintain just a one-bedroom unit on the first floor and then use the second and like the third half-floor, because it's not a true full-floor as like a master bedroom. So us and our two college-age daughters who still live with us have a room, so it would just be the three of us, well, the four of us in the upstairs unit, living. And then the downstairs would just be a one-bedroom that we would rent out. And the, really, the big picture idea is that, that one-bedroom unit downstairs could be a, a ground-floor unit that we could retire to someday, because we, we plan on, we're both local people. I grew up in Neptune City and Mike grew up in West Belmar, and we're local people and we're just looking out to live out our days close to the beach in a nice house, because this house is, um, you know, very old. It's over a hundred years old, and it doesn't have a lot of the modern functionalities that we just gave up, so it's been tough.
And for you, the biggest limitation is the fact that the, the existing depth of the property is only fifty feet, correct?
Yes.
And surrounding neighborhood, your neighbor to the south, that's a similar-sized layout?
Yes.
Neighbor to the north is, I'm sorry?
Maybe smaller. I don't know the exact layout, but.
Depth, depth-wise, it's about the same.
Okay.
Correct?
Yes, yes, depth-wise, yes.
And then the neighbor to the north actually is commercial property. It's a church, correct?
Yes, yes, it is.
And then across the street, do you see similarly, similarly similar layouts in the middle of the block as you have on your side of the block?
Yes, so the house directly across the street from us has a front house and then a back cottage house. And then the house just to the north side of that is a two-family home as well. That's three stories. They have driveways with garages on their first floor, and then I am assuming the second and third floor is all livable space. So yes, both right across the street.
So similar to, to the, the functionality and layout out of your property again?
Yes, correct. And we had actually wanted to knock this house down and do like across the street with the, with the driveway and the garages, but we were advised against that, so that's why we, this was like plan B, and, you know, we're happy with this as well, so.
Okay, and one other, two other questions. One is, what's the existing parking situation for your lot today?
Um, so we don't have any parking, just off-street parking, but in the plans, we do propose a two-car driveway and forfeiting a patio area that we have, so we'll lose some outdoor living area to provide that off-street parking.
And you're also looking to modify some of the existing impervious coverage to reduce that to below what's permitted in the ordinance?
Yes, yep. The, right now, as it stands, the house is surrounded by concrete. So we're willing to rip all that up and put maybe a softer landscape in to absorb, you know, rainwater or what have you, whatever we, whatever, you know, is suggested, we're willing to do.
And the proposed.
Concrete.
The proposed dwelling footprint that you're the proposed dwelling footprint that you're proposing with this application is directly, basically directly above the existing footprint, and it certainly doesn't go beyond the existing footprint, correct?
Yes, we worked directly with James to make sure that we weren't encroaching on anything that isn't already there. So we just worked with what we already had for budget purposes as well as, you know, not needing more variances. So, yes.
Well, at the same time, reducing certain conditions.
Yes, that's true too, yes.
Okay, thank you. I have no other questions for Ms. Carabin.
Anybody from the board have questions for Ms. Carabin? Anybody from the general public have questions for Ms. Carabin? Christine, no?
There's, um, just the initials M S. I don't know who that is. M S. Can you unmute yourself? Because.
You gotta unmute yourself, M S.
You, okay.
There you go.
Great.
Questions for them all?
Okay, well, I just have a statement to make?
No, statements for later. Question?
Okay, no questions right now, then.
Thank you.
Okay.
Continue, Mr. Beekman.
Thank you. I'm going to call Mr. Connor to testify.
Oh, wait, I, Lauren Egbert has her hand raised and she's waving.
Okay, sorry.
Lauren, you have to unmute.
Yes, um.
I'm sorry, I'm having a little bit, okay. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Name and address.
To hear me. Okay, I gotta. I'm sorry, I'm, I'm actually off-site in Rochester and having a little technical difficulty, but I was noticed on this property. I live just around the block.
Hey, Lauren. Hey, Lauren.
To give your address.
Lauren. Lauren Egbert. Four oh four and a half Brynley Avenue.
Thank you.
It's just around the block. Yeah, just around the corner. My one question, the applicant mentioned that she was planning eventually to move downstairs and retire to the downstairs floor, and I was wondering if she could tell us something about what the use of the upstairs floor would be at that point?
Well, I have four daughters, so my thought is, is that as my four kids get older, and it's hard to, you know, for young kids these days with student loan debt to really get ahead in life, that maybe one of my kids would take it over and like it would be our family house and it would get passed down to them, because that's a lot of the intention of doing this is to, you know, have this to grow like with our family. You know, I have another daughter that might actually be my tenant. So I just want to, you know, so that's, that's our intent, that we'll use it within our family, so.
If I may, if I may, Ms. Carabin, to be clear, you actually testified you're going to use the upstairs, correct?
Yes, we're gonna, yes, we're going to use the upstairs, absolutely. And I mean, we're, when I'm saying retiring, I'm talking about in another twenty-five, thirty years. So we're just normal working people, and we don't have traditional retirement, so this is kind of helping, this is kind of our retirement investment. So when I talk about that, I'm proposing like twenty-five years down the road. But intentionally, yes, me and our two adult daughters and my husband are going to live here. Yes, this is going to be our primary residence.
With what's proposed as a rental on the first floor unit?
Correct, right.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
So.
Thank you very much.
Um, I'm sorry. Am I, am I being heard?
Yeah, we're a little.
So, Carabin.
I don't hear you now.
We don't hear you now.
Okay, one second. Do you hear me now? I wasn't.
Yeah.
Okay, I, the, I just wanted to clarify with Ms. Carabin if she bespoke when she said that they intended to retire to the downstairs?
No, because, I mean, it's. Well, and maybe I'm getting too far ahead of myself, but I'm talking about when I'm eighty years old and I can't make it up to the third floor. That's all. I'm saying it's an option for my husband and myself who are not going to have, you know, we have to be, we have to start being smart now because we don't have traditional pensions or retirements because he's been self-employed. That's all. That's what I meant by.
Thank.
Okay.
Was there another hand, Ms. Tickett?
Um, Mr. Cohen disappeared on me. He had his hand raised. I don't know.
Unmute. Yeah. Yeah, I'm having some video problems. I apologize.
Okay.
I'll be back. I know I have to be on video, so I'll be back.
Well, Mr. Cohen.
Yes, sir.
So here's, I want to be consistent with our policy. If a question, you can ask a question, but once you start testifying, you have to be on video.
Oh, okay, then that'll be fine. I should have it worked out then, Mr. Kittredge.
Okay.
I had a question for.
But just state your address, please.
Sure, Thomas J. Cohen, six twelve Third Avenue.
Okay.
It says in the application, Ms. Carrman, that the existing dwelling is older and needs modernization to make it comfortable, compatible with year-round living. Has this property been occupied year-round in the past?
Yes, it has. We had renters in here.
And now it's no longer compatible?
Well, you know what? When you're a twenty-year-old kid renting your fir- first apartment, it's great. It's three blocks to the beach. We were great landlords. We provided reasonable rent. But you know what? As people in their fifties that have worked for their entire lives, I don't have a dishwasher. I don't have a washer and dryer. I don't have a bathtub to give my granddaughter a bath. I have to go to my mother's house down the road in Neptune City to give my granddaughter a bath. So that's all I'm asking for. I'm not asking for luxury and hot tubs. I just need modern functionality because that's what I gave up, you know, to, so it's just hard when you have tho- those kind of things, and then you don't have them anymore. And that's all I'm asking for is, is just the basics.
Are, are you aware that the variances you're requesting go with the land and not necessarily with the owner?
I don't understand that question. Maybe Jeff.
That's, that's, that's a legal question. I understand your question, but, you know, she's a layperson, so.
Okay, um, did you look into converting the existing two-stories into a three- or four-bedroom, single-family home?
No, because I, I, I need the income. Like I said, my husband's self-employed. I'm, I work, but you know what? We were making money off of this rental house from people that did live here year-long, and since we've moved in here, we've lost that income. And it's been a struggle. So to be honest with you, if this all doesn't work out tonight, and with the money I've already invested to get here tonight, I'm going to have to turn around and rent this house out again because I'm not going to be able to afford to live here. And I can't live here in the condition that it is, because I don't know if you have grandchildren, but I'd like to give my granddaughter a bath, you know? And I, like I said, I have four daughters. This is just my one grandchild, and if this is the house I want to live in and have holidays, I need modern functionality. It's twenty twenty-one. I shouldn't have to live in a nineteen-twenty house if I'm willing to spend the money on it. That's all.
You, you still want to maintain the rental, though, you know, even to get your modern features?
Another question?
Yes, yeah, she's, yeah.
I do, yes, I do.
Okay, thanks very much, Mr. Kitt. Thank you very much, Mr. Jim.
Any other questions, Ms. Tickett?
I don't see any hands raised.
Continue, Mr. Beekman.
I just have one file or a couple of follow-ups to the, the last couple of questions. So Ms. Carabin, the house existing today is a two-family, correct?
Yes, it is.
You're not looking to increase it to a two, a three-family, right?
No, I'm not.
You're actually looking to reduce the rental unit to a one-family, correct?
Correct, from a two-bedroom to a one-bedroom, right. So we won't get two-bedroom anymore. It'll just be a one-bedroom, but at least it will be something.
And we've had actually some discussions that the ordinance in Bradley Beach actually allows some properties to have a one-bedroom garage, garage apartment, correct?
Yes, correct.
And that would be income for those houses that can accommodate those amenities?
Right.
Thank you.
Continue, next witness.
Okay, Mr. Connor. James, you, have you testified before boards before?
Uh, I have in, in Allenhurst. I have not done it in Bradley Beach yet.
Okay, and you are licensed in the field of architecture in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, I am.
Um, and you're familiar with the plans and the application that has been submitted to the board this evening?
Yes.
And were you intimately involved with preparing those plans?
Absolutely, one hundred percent.
And if you could just tell for the board, what is your actual licensing and when in the state of New Jersey?
Um, my license actually became officially active on June first of twenty twenty-one. So this is my first official, uh, as a licensed architect appearance. But I have been practicing in the field of architecture since, I've been working since two thousand and one, graduated from Jackson University in two thousand and seven. Been working pretty steadily since, uh, and then working and studying for my, for my exams and finally passed them.
And you've been working under a licensed architect during that time?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Preparing plans?
Preparing plans, uh, from start to finish, from conceptual design all the way through structure. I've been, uh, pretty much working autonomously, uh, under the, you know, under the tutelage of a licensed architect, but.
If, if you're satisfied with him, he's okay.
I, I am. Thank you.
This is his first one around here, so, you know.
It is, it is. Other than Allenhurst, which obviously I guess was not with a, with a license, but under the tutelage of a.
Right, this is his first licensed jobs.
Yes.
Thank you. So, Mr. Connor, when you sat down with the Carabins, what were the goals that you had, uh, and they had in mind when you were designing what's being proposed here?
Um, I'm, originally, she, she came to me with, um, some plans that she had, uh, procured from a, I think it was from prefab scenario. After doing a zoning analysis and determining that we had some, you know, site constraints that the, the possibility of taking the building down and rebuilding something larger would present a lot of obstacles. We decided that a rehab was a better option for this particular site. And also, too, to bring in the project within their, but their comfort zone for budget. So we decided to keep the original two-story, uh, first two floors, uh, as built and prepare to add a half-story master street addition. So basically just, you know, replacing the roof and creating a stair tower to that new half-story. When we got into the design of it and finding out what their further needs were, Val had mentioned a, um, a desire that she, you know, wants to stay in this house for the duration of, of her entire life. That's when we suggested that keeping the, the first floor as a one-bedroom unit for a possible later retirement unit and keeping the upper floor, which she will use now as her owner suite, or her owner, uh, unit, which is larger and can accommodate the family for the gatherings that she wants to have. And her two adult daughters that are still, uh, living with her. So, that is where we came up with the concept of keeping the same number of bedrooms that are currently on the property, just reconfiguring which unit they get to stay in.
And when you were designing that, you were cognizant of, of the fact that, um, this is a, a used variance condition, because there's a, there's a proposed expansion, expansion of an existing use, correct?
Yes, yes, we were aware, um, and, and, you know, we advised that it was a, um, it was gonna be a, uh, you know, a, a bit of a, you know, a bit of a road to, to get the, uh, to get this through, but, um, yeah, I think that what we've tried to ask for is, uh, reasonable and in keeping with, uh, the character of the, the town.
So, if you can, uh, maybe we can go through your plans. And my computer is holding out on me right now, as far as sharing.
I could show them on my screen if you'd like.
I'm sorry, say that again, James?
I could show them on my screen if.
Okay, that's fine.
Right.
Okay, you ready?
I'm trying to, but it's funny this happened here. Um, all right, I am screenshotting, correct, right?
Yes.
Okay, um, so, what we did here, um, basically, this is just a, the, the V A R number one, the first page, is just a, um, depiction of what the existing footprint is, uh, as it rem, as it is built today and will remain, uh, the same footprint. I believe Jeff, uh, is going to be speaking more to the, um, to the, the lot variances, or should I speak to them now, Jeff?
Well, let, let's, let's talk about the existing conditions and then what's being proposed within those.
Okay, uh, so the existing conditions, uh, the existing lot is a fifty-by-fifty lot, which is, um, existing not conforming, it's an undersized lot, propose, uh, by about half. The existing lot width conforms to fifty, however, the lot depth, which, uh, is required of the punt feet, is only a fifty foot, fifty-foot depth. The existing building, um, was built, um, at fourteen-point-five-eight, um, setback, and the required would be fifteen, so that is another variant. The rear, uh, structure was built, um, less than ten feet, is at the three-point-two-five, um, which is actually, um, according to my plan, it's three-point-two-five, um, but, uh, I, I believe, uh, Joe, Joseph has, uh, has a, a different number, I think it's three-point-four, um, I don't have it on me, but, um, and, uh, the, uh, existing side yards, which require a five-foot and ten-foot are, um, are, uh, both to, um, the, uh, point, or, or existing of three-and-a-half, or three-point-five-eight and four-point-eight-one. Um, the existing structure is, uh, only twenty-two foot, four-and-a-half tall, um, which is within the comfor, within conformance. Um, and the existing ground floor unit is seven-hundred-and-sixty square feet, and the existing second floor unit is nine-hundred-and-forty-three square feet. So, they're, they're fairly small units, um, for two, few minutes.
And you're proposing a half-story addition on top of the existing second story?
Yes, we are proposing a half-story addition on top of the existing, of the first, of the, um.
So, with, with that half-story addition, where does the roof line start as compared to the top of the second floor today?
The roof line starts at the same point, uh, we're building on the existing plate, uh, which is, it's a masonry, um, showing the first, the existing first floor here, um, the existing structure, as you can see, depicted by the thicker perimeter walls, is an existing two-story masonry structure. Um, we are proposing to remove the existing roof and just build up on top of it. So, where the existing line of the, um, roof is now, is where the roof would start in the proposed.
So, generally, the existing wall heights that are be, being proposed are no different than what's existing today?
No, they are not, they're, they're proposed to remain.
The, the only area where that might change, and I'm not even sure, you can correct me, but what about the dorm or, I'm, I'm sorry, the, uh, the proposed balcony area?
Um, the proposed balcony area, we would like to, um, if feasible with the, um, budget, raise it up a little bit, it is a little low. Um, this is a determination that we're gonna have to make as, um, as the project progresses and, you know, real budget numbers come back. Um, proposing as right now, that it's probably going to be raised, um, to, to an appropriate eight-foot height, um, but that would be one of the first things that gets removed and will keep if need be, uh, if for budget reasons.
So, when you say would be in, at an eight-foot height, where, and, and I see you're showing the, uh, the floor plan, the proposed habitable attic, where would that eight-foot height be?
On the proposed habitable attic, the, um, if you see where my cursor is, um, this dash line, as, as it's shown up on, is where we reach a full height of eight feet, so inside the master bedroom where, where I'm indicating now, and where it, um, beyond towards the exterior is, um, where the, uh, the roof would slope down to a five-foot plate height.
Okay. All right, and so, so if you can describe, um, today, the existing first floor, and compare it to what's proposed on the existing first floor?
So, the existing first floor, so we'll go back to that, is, um, as you can see on the left-hand side, there are two bedrooms, uh, stacked front and back. Um, as you enter the unit through the main door, you're entered into a small, uh, living dining room area with a, um, there's a balcony, uh, pass-through, and another, uh, entrance into the kitchen, where you have, uh, your, your three-quarter bath, which is the only bath in the unit, um, and then the, at the rear exit back out to the, that patio that, um, that Val had, uh, discussed previously, uh, and to an existing storage shed that is, uh, there, and, um, an outdoor shower that's in kind of a brief, like, area between the two, uh, the storage shed and the unit.
So, that little extension is, uh, it's not even a full floor height, the, what's the shed?
Uh, no, it is, it is pretty low in there, um. It is, uh, I believe it's a seven-foot, uh, high area. Uh, when you step, this is where my, uh, cursor is indicating now, is, is a bit of a step-up, I think it's about three inches, uh, out of grid, um, just thickness of the slab, and, uh, and it's pretty low when you walk in there, so it's enough to get a door height in, basically.
And, and the, that, that's an outdoor shower area that you're kinda, your cursor was over, correct?
Yes, yeah, where my, where the cursor is right now is.
Is that more or less limited to summer, or is it year-round?
Um, I mean, I would imagine it's only used in the, uh, in the summertime, it's not enclosed, uh, other than, uh, other than by the, the, uh, three walls surrounding. Um, so it is, uh, I think it's limited to a beach rinse-off type scenario, rather than an actual shower.
And the, uh, the storage or shed area there, there's no mechanicals or heating or, or plumbing or anything in that area, correct?
No, it is unheated, uh, it is simply an, an accessory, uh, structure.
Okay, so, if, going back to the question about, uh, comparison to the existing ground floor, uh, and compare it to the proposed ground floor, if you can describe the proposed?
So, in the proposal, let's switch over here now, um, in the proposal, what we've decided to do was, uh, we took out the wall in between the two-bedroom unit, uh, two bedrooms, uh, creating a larger living dining space. And then providing, uh, at, at Val's request, a, um, a direct vent fireplace, um, to help supplement the, uh, the heating in the winter time. Uh, we've taken what was, it used to be the existing dining room slash living room, and made that the new bedroom, which is, um, a fairly decent size of thirteen-three by, uh, ten-seven. Sealing up that existing, uh, pass-through, we decided to put the, um, the closet in, uh, for the, for the, for the bedroom in that area. And then, back out through the living and dining room, we opened up, um, the kitchen to create a, uh, a nicer pass-through, um, into a more functional, uh, L-shaped design, with the, uh, dryer posing the cooking and, uh, cleaning. And then, adjacent to the refrigerator, we were gonna put a stacked laundry unit um, for, for this unit, uh, and, uh, modify the bath to accommodate a full shower and tub. And we're keeping the existing, uh, back door. And that was really the only, uh, major change to, to that unit. Uh, outside of that unit, in order to give a nicer entrance to the, um, second floor unit, we took some of that existing covered porch space and created a vestibule for the upper unit, um, which would be set behind where the existing setback is, so we wouldn't further encroach, uh, onto, into that, uh, back. And let's just give them a nicer place for, uh, for them to hang their coats and, uh, you know, take off sandy shoes and leave beach towels and chairs and stuff, and then head up to the new owner's suite, which would be up these existing stairs.
Now, with respect to that vestibule area, so the setback at the ground level is going to be conforming?
Yes, the setback at the ground level is conforming, we are, we are behind, uh, the existing, or the, the required fifteen-foot setback.
And the piers that you're showing there, those are the existing piers?
These are the existing piers, the only thing we are proposing to do with them is to, um, resurface them. And, uh, right now, they have a split-faced, uh, block finish, and we would just like to smooth that out and create a, um, a raised panel detail, um, more in keeping with the, uh, the architecture seen around the town. More, more, you know, short, single file.
I'm sorry, and, um, those piers are, would be used for structural support for the second floor and the upper story?
Yes, they are the structural support for the, um, for the existing living room, but now proposed sitting room and, uh, and proposed stair tower.
Okay, let's go back to the existing second floor, and again, we're gonna compare the, the existing second floor to what the proposed second floor is.
The existing second floor is, as you enter the unit from the, from those existing stairs, you're met into a small, um, vestibule, which the three-quarter bath is, uh, located off of, as well as the entry closet. Uh, then you go through directly into the kitchen, which, uh, from the kitchen, you can exit out to the front, which is the, um, current dining area. And then, through the dining area, you access the, the two bedrooms. And then, behind the existing front bedroom is an, is another similar configuration to downstairs, another, uh, rear bedroom in the corner, which has another door into the existing kitchen. Through the front door, um, in, is where the existing, uh, the current living room is, um, which is, you know, particularly, um, a former enclosed, or I should say, a, um, enclosed porch type, uh, setup. It is, it is air-conditioned and, uh, heated, so it is living space. But it is very linear.
The piers that you see on the existing ground floor, where would, if you could just point with your, uh, cursor on the second floor, where would they be?
There's one under the corner here. There's one in between the windows here, in between the windows here, and then a corner here below.
So, that second floor, the front of the second floor is sitting directly on those piers at this point?
The, the front of the second floor is sitting directly on those piers, yeah.
Okay, and now, let's go to the proposed second floor.
In the proposed second floor, again, we are, we're keeping the existing stair, and we've opened up the area when you land to, you know, in, you know, increase the, uh, the fees you enter the unit. Um, again, we, we increased the existing bathroom to accommodate a full tub shower. Provided a stacked laundry unit in a closet directly adjacent. Opened up the, um, what used to be the kitchen and dining area into a combined space of the, the open kitchen and the living dining area. Reconfiguring the bedrooms a little bit to create closets that were lacking in the original. And, you know, to accommodate two, uh, college-age girls, um, uh, giving them both a nicer, you know, bedroom to, you know, to use than their home. We've eliminated, oh, sorry.
I'm sorry, and what's the size of those bedrooms compared to the existing?
Of, the current size of bedrooms is, um, is eleven foot four and nine foot nine for the, for the first bedroom, and nine foot nine by ten-four in the rear room, as opposed to the existing bedroom, which I don't have on the plan, um, but I can get that in a moment, um. They are. Yeah, I don't. I can, I can pull up the plan if that would help in measure, I do not have that called out here, but.
Well, I, I guess my question is, with, with the closets, they're actually a little bit smaller? The larger closets?
Yes, with the closets, they are a little bit taller than, um, than they were previously.
That's fine. Do you go back to the proposed?
We decided to open up the existing doorway to let more light into the proposed living room, dining room area. Um, keeping the, the left three-quarters as a sitting room, and enclosing, or recapturing the, um, the left uh, third for the stair tower to access the new proposed, um, half-story.
Okay. So, again, with, with respect to the front, and, and I keep asking this question, because there is a variance condition proposed for the front, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
With respect to the front, you're not looking to go any closer to the front lot line that exists today?
No, that is, that is absolutely true, we are proposing to build on a top of existing walls.
Okay. Um, and the, the vestibule itself, so that's actually sitting, uh, again, to the front, that's actually gonna be sitting on the, the piers?
Excuse me, yeah, it's, it's sitting within the piers. Or are you talking about the, uh, the sitting room?
So, on the first floor, you, you see on the first floor there, the vestibule sits back beyond the piers?
It's just behind the piers.
But on the second floor, it actually sits on, uh, to the front of the piers?
On the second floor, it lines up the ceiling wall, which is, yes, on the front end of the pier.
And that's the same as the existing conditions, my point?
Yes, it is.
The, the other question I have there, so that area that we're talking about, how far is that from the property to the south?
Um, the existing, I'm sorry, the existing, uh. I'm sorry.
It's more than ten feet, correct?
Yes, it's been ten feet, yeah.
Is it probably more than fifteen feet?
I mean, I, I'm not, I'm not sure, uh, I guess, yes, it would, it would be. Sorry, it is, um, you know, it's fifteen, I'm sorry, I was, I was lost, so it's, um, it's about, it's just under sixteen feet.
So, it sits kind of in the middle of the property where we're talking about here?
Yes, absolutely, yeah, it is.
And then, let's, uh, let's talk about what's being proposed with the, go back to the roof lines and the, and the, um, half-story.
Okay.
So, before, before you do that, what are the calculations of the second floor?
Um, the seventh floor.
The square footage?
The square footage of the second floor is, um, as it exists today, nine-hundred-and-forty-three square feet. With the, um, I'm sorry, we're keeping that square footage, uh, as long as we include the stair tower, which, um, and, or if we deduct the, the stair tower out of it, we're actually, um, reducing it to eight-hundred-and-eighty square feet.
Say that again, I didn't hear you.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, um, if we are counting the stair tower, it's remaining the nine-hundred-and-forty-three square feet. Um, if we deduct the stair tower out of it, we're actually, which would be a deduction of floor area, um, we're reducing it to eight-hundred-and-eighty-three square feet, that floor.
Okay, and then, what is the, what are the dimensions of the half-story?
The, oh, the, um, the square footage of the half-story is three-hundred-and-sixty-nine square feet.
So, whether we use the eight-eighty or the nine-forty? So whether we use the eight eighty or the nine forty-three, it does comply with the definition of fifty percent or less?
Yes, it does, absolutely.
All right, let's uh describe what's being proposed with this third floor.
On the third floor, we um we're proposing to cut the new newly constructed stair tower to access into the proposed master bedroom. The master bedroom space is going to be thirteen foot zero by seventeen foot nine, so seventeen foot nine east to west and thirteen foot zero um north south. And then a proposed en suite bathroom with a shower and a vanity and toilet, uh just a three piece. It's a proposed balcony, um hopefully to capture some, you know, partial views um towards the ocean.
And on the exterior of the master bedroom to the north, how high is that wall being proposed?
Uh this wall that's set in.
To the, I'm sorry, to the north, to the north. The other side.
So this line here is the uh the second, the line of the second part of this.
James, the wa- the wall, the height of the wall of the master bedroom?
Height of the wall of the master bedroom is um I guess the it would be eight foot in the center. Flipping down, I mean, the stair tower is um, because I believe uh, let me check here. Eight foot as well. Um so the stair towers are eight foot. Um and I'm not sure if I'm answering the question that you have, but.
Well, I I guess that that wall height is is does it protrude out of the roof or is it tucked into the roof?
Um this wall with the window in it and this wall with the window in it are um their dormers will be underneath the roof structure. Um the only area that would quote protrude above the uh the roof line would be this stair tower area, which is just you know, just depict as a as a tower on the front.
And you know, actually, if you don't mind, go back to the uh proposed drawings for the um elevations. That stair tower that's being proposed, there is a setback requested for that, correct? A setback variance?
Yes, in in order for ease of construction, we've decided to, we tried to um ask to stay on top of the existing walls that were constructed. Which would we would be increasing the height of the wall from the from the existing plate height of um seven, I think, seven foot eight to uh a kind of an eight foot plate height on the uh half level.
And and where that's located, that's not real close to the south line. That's again, that's at that point, that's over fifteen feet from the south sideline, correct?
Yes, it would be roughly in the center of the property.
And and it's not right on top of the north sideline, it's actually tucked in quite a, it's quite a bit away from that north sideline as well, correct?
Yes, it's greater than fifteen feet.
So the so the front yard setback variance that's being proposed is only within that vestibule area on the second, in the stair tower?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, um do you have the front elevation?
Uh, yeah.
I'm sorry, that is the front, right?
This is the front, yes.
Do you have the north side elevation?
Uh the north is northwest, but yeah.
So that's that's the north side?
Yes.
Okay, so.
Yeah, I'm sorry, actually, north is, north is the rear, here you go. This is the north.
Okay. So that's the balcony?
Yes, this is the balcony.
So it's actually looking, that's actually looking west?
I'm sorry.
From the west. So east elevation, looking west?
The east elevators, yeah.
Okay.
What west elevation looking east, right?
Okay, let's talk about that one. So that's where the balcony is proposed.
Um, yes, it is.
Why why is the balcony proposed on the east side of the building, which happens to be the rear?
Um, we were trying to um, first of all, um, we were trying to capture mainly uh partial views if there were any to be had um towards the ocean. Um but also it would be beneficial to to uh help uh capture some of the prevailing breeze that would be coming off of the water. Um kind of helping in a natural uh air conditioning uh scenario, uh considering the entire uh uh master suite is contained underneath the roof eaves, tend to get a little uh hot up there, so we wanted to give as much opportunity to get uh as much fresh air uh as we could.
And one of Bradley Beach's unique features is the fact that it sits on the Atlantic Ocean and and beach views as well as that breeze are important features that are important for when you design a building, correct?
Absolutely. I mean, the the whole character of living at the beach is uh is pretty it's pretty heavily weighted on whether whether or not you have a an ocean view, which of course, you know, tends to come in a premium. But mainly it's that, it's just the overall air, the um the breeze you get off the bay, the scents you get from the ocean, the sound that you get from, you know, the the use of the beach uh and the, you know, both the uh the human and animal sounds that you can hear. Um just add to the whole ambiance of what living at the shore is.
All right, and just going through uh Mr. Frida's um letter, page two, section C, which would be three C?
Yeah.
Um you had some discussions about location of the HVAC equipment?
Yes, in in order to uh.
Well, let me let me ask you, the short of it is, you're going to meet the setback requirements for the HVAC equipment, correct?
Yes, we are.
Okay, and so go ahead, if if you could talk about what's been discussed.
Yes, uh what we've discussed is in order to keep with the um the setback requirement, um we've decided to utilize the existing um roof area that will be storage shed as a an a form mechanic for the mechanical equipment. We have not yet fully discussed the possibility, but we would like to um provide some sort of a screen or screening device around it, so they're not so, you know, visible. But uh.
Maybe show the front elevation, that might show a little bit better indication of location.
Yeah, so we're we're about utilizing the area over in this corner.
So that might have some architectural features just to just to uh block it. If if we're a ground level, you might have some uh landscaping that's surrounding it.
Yes, absolutely. We're we're proposing, we would be proposing to put as much uh landscaping around, kind of to soften the uh the hard edges of the um of the uh existing building and just kind of add a little bit of a buffer if we um you know, we have um the the rendering uh wants to, that would show the um, you know, suggested plantings.
But no matter what, the location where it's ultimately going to be is going to comply with the ordinance setback.
Yes, it is. Yes, absolutely.
Um, and let's continue on to section D three. Um I think you explained the extent of the front yard setback already, correct?
Yes, yes.
And um that whole, again, we're looking at the front elevation, that whole stair tower, it's just a stair tower, there's no living space in there, correct?
There is no living space, no, it is it is strictly for the conveyance of floors.
And so it's just an architectural feature. How how high is that stair tower in the front?
Uh the stair tower in the front is uh twenty, I think it was twenty-four or twenty feet to to the top, right?
So certainly lower than thirty feet?
Yes, um the the existing um, the the peak of the main roof is at thirty-two feet.
The main roof is at thirty-two?
Yeah, the main roof is right up to thirty-two and the um the stair tower is below that, about two, two and a half feet.
Okay. Um and I guess going back to maybe go back to the the rear elevation. So the the half story that the roof pitches back quite away from of the existing second story plate?
Uh yes, it is. Um it pitched back, we used a twelve on twelve pitch, so for every foot of rise is a foot of return. Um so by the time it actually gets to, you know, living space back there, a solid, you know, five feet away from the actual property or from the actual uh uh perimeter of the existing footprint.
If you know, James, and I don't know, I don't think I asked you to measure this, but the railings for that balcony, how far are they from the rear lot line or how far are they with from the from the roof line?
Um so from the roof line, it would be um, it's a it's an eighteen inch over, so it would be an eighteen inch uh overhang in the rear as well. But it would be in line with this rear wall, so it would be the same as the existing setback.
Okay. And you have looked at this closely to make sure that what you're designing above the existing footprint doesn't create any larger nonconformity, correct?
Yes, that is one of those, one of the main uh, the main driving factors of the design was to minimize the amount of uh additional uh variances we would need, um considering there were existing nonconformities.
And in your expert opinion, as an architect, this design really considers the size of the lot? In a way?
Yes, it does, and I but also in more than just the um spatial demands um and of the ordinance and what not, what was not allowed, what was allowed. Um the decision to keep the master suite under roof um was also a design aspect uh in order to minimize the impact on a small lot in a small street, on a small street. Um it just kind of makes the whole uh roof line recede a little bit. And makes it less, you know, jarring.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I don't have any other questions for Mr. Connor.
Anybody from the board have questions for Mr. Connor? I can't see because I only got three people on my screen.
Um, Mr. Connor, you want us to stop sharing your screen?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Any questions in the board and Mr. Connor?
I I do have, Chairman, I do have, I have a question. Regarding the the balcony, um recessed balcony up there, if that had been on the front of the house, that would need no variance to be required. Is that correct?
That is correct.
I'm just curious why it's on the back, it's an awful lot being asked for this property and adding one more variance that maybe could be eliminated.
Well. We can address that, just so we're clear about what the variance for the rear is related to the setback, it's not specifically related to the balcony itself.
I'm saying, you may you may be correct where you stated, maybe in good faith that things is changing, having the balcony on the back is not going to be permitted going forward. And you're asking an awful lot here, and you think you may want to rethink that. Bring it to the front, put more windows in the back, you'll increase the size of your bedroom, and you'll somewhat come into conform, not going to be conforming, but you'll be somewhat in conformance on that one particular feature going forward. It's just a thought, and I think maybe the board is interested in chase pursuing that, that's my opinion on that, because you're asking, you're asking an awful lot here. I look, architecturally, this thing's a, it's, my hat's off the architect, it's neat looking. It's neat on a fifty by hundred foot lot. Uh fifty by fifty, you're really squeezing some a lot in here.
I think I think as well, did a great job, but I, the balcony in the front would be much, I think it'd be easier for the community and easier for us to digest. Victoria, you want to say something?
I do, I have a question. With regard to the windows on the proposed on the southwest side, there are thirteen windows on the second and third floor. How close are the neighbors? I mean, due to someone's privacy, I mean, I I get letting light in, but that's a lot of windows on that one side of the house. Just being for privacy purposes.
Connor? What is the side yard setback on that side, Mr. Connor?
Oh, I'm sorry, uh my my audio uh cut out for a second there. The side yard setback on the uh the left, the um the north side?
The southwest side.
The southwest side is um.
Are you talking about the front elevation?
Not talking about the elevation, I was just pointing out the number of windows. There's thirteen windows on the second and third floor on the southwest side.
That's the front elevation.
That is the front of of the house.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
The side of the house, somebody has.
I was twisted, sorry.
Four or five.
Okay, I was turned around.
Any other questions in the board?
Chairman, I have one more question.
Dennis?
Um I'm looking at at the floor plans, is this house heated by electric heat or what's, I don't see the furnace or anything located on the interior?
Currently, it is electric uh baseboard. Um but, yeah, we're proposing to convert.
And where will the mechanicals, where will the mechanicals be uncovered?
I'm sorry?
Where will the mechanicals be?
Uh the mechanicals we're going to place on top of the storage shed.
Is that allowed by code?
Uh, yeah.
And that you had also proposed, if that's okay, that you would enclose those to soften the look?
Yes, we would we would uh employ a screen device around the unit, so they would not be so visible.
John, get on mute, John.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh yeah, just along the same lines of a question around privacy um and and just location of that balcony up top um where with the front location, perhaps that wouldn't be as yeah, concerning uh regarding privacy for the neighbors. That's just a question.
A little louder.
That's just a question that we have there.
Any other questions in the board? Buddy? Anybody, any questions to Mr. Connors from the general public?
Mr. Corian has his hand raised.
Mr. Corian?
Uh Thomas Coann, six twelve Third Avenue. I I did have trouble hearing Mr. Connor. But uh, Mr. Connor, I I wanted to know, you stated that you did a zoning analysis. Did you only do the zoning analysis for the two family home? Or did you do any zoning analysis for a single family home?
Um the analysis would remain the same uh for both a a single family or or a multifamily. Um basically, what it comes down to as far as what we look at as architects is um is for coverage, um allowable square footage and um or building coverage, uh impervious coverage and allowable square footage as well as a use. Um we knew going into it that the use was already an existing nonconforming, and we're just proposing to keep that existing use.
And so you you didn't look into ordinance uh twenty twenty-one dash five and how it would make it easier to get approval for a single family home? That wasn't part of your analysis?
It was not part of my uh our client's desire to to create a single family home.
Thank you, and and also, um you know, what's the view from this back balcony? Can you see the ocean from there?
It is possible, but unlikely. You know, depending on how trees line up and everything, but um, you know, we're we're hoping. Um but without actually the the benefit of being up there, we would not know until.
That upstairs uh master suite, that that does have central air, does it not?
Yes, it does. It will be heated in there.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Miss Miss Albert, Lauren. Get on mute.
Okay, thank you. Um I'm concerned about these mechanicals on the roof, on the on the top of the shed. And I'm wondering how far that shed is from the house next door to the south?
From the house next door.
And from the property, from the property in the back and what those implications may be for noise and and for visuals, both from the street, from the property next door, from from the property behind it?
Um, I mean, the the new units are are fairly quiet. Um they're they're much more efficient and quiet. A lot of design, a lot of time has been taken to minimize the noise effect of the uh the unit. Um the existing shed is currently to the rear lot line, four point four feet. And to the uh to the south or the neighboring property is four point nine feet to the existing edge of the the um storage shed, and we would be proposing to put the units inside of that, so they'd be within the setbacks required for the units.
Thank you.
Any other questions to the general public? Any other questions to the general public? Ms. Devane?
Hi, my name is Bridgette Devane, I live at three hundred thirteen Lorena, um, around the corner from the property, I was notified. Um, I'm within the two hundred feet, um, and my questions are, one, I had a difficult time telling where the entrances are, because I assume there are two separate entrances. If somebody could clarify where the, um, the lower level tenants would enter and where the owners would enter the second floor, and then, um, I haven't heard anyone speak to the driveway and the size of the actual driveway. Um, if somebody could, uh, address that and whether.
If I may, look, can we take this one at a time for, for the
Sure.
current, for the architect? James, can you pull up your plans again and maybe address the first question as far as the entrance ways?
Excuse me, Jeff, this is Jerry, while, while he's doing that, um, I have the same questions on the driveway, but I'm waiting for the testimony for the engineer.
Correct.
Okay, then I'll hold on my other questions.
Uh, does everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, um, so the first floor suite, the, the, the one bedroom unit will be entered from the front, this is the, uh, the front. From the front, uh, directly, uh, under the existing, uh, covered patio, covered porch. The second floor unit, which would be entered from the driveway side, uh, on the side here, again, under the existing covered porch, accessing the existing door, um, so if we want to see on the front elevation, this, this door over on the, the lower, uh, left hand of the page is the door to the, uh, one bedroom unit, and then if we look on the side, um, the, um, the door to the owner, or the upper unit is on the side towards the garage, in underneath the tower.
Thank you. Take it down. That satisfy Mr. Devane?
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions in the public?
Just if, if I can, Mr. Rosenberg, to comment on the other question, so we do have an engineer who will talk about the site layout and the driveway and walkways, and those will be part of that site layout.
That's perfect with us.
Thank you.
Any, any other questions in the public? Continue, Mr. Beckman.
Uh, if I could just ask a couple of quick questions, um, regarding the, uh, the balcony. So, I actually was texting with my client, um, about that, Mr. Connor, if, if the balcony was pulled out, uh, what would you propose on that rear wall? Would, would that be windows?
Uh, yes, if we, if we took the balcony out, we would probably propose windows very similar to, uh, what is depicted on the front of the elevation, so just, uh,
Could you bring up your elevations again, and particularly the rear?
Okay, let me share my screen. Alright, so in the rear here, where the balcony is, we would propose, um, replacing this door with, uh, window configuration, similar to what you see on the front here with just the, uh, the double window.
Now, would, would that, um, where would those windows sit if you did that? From, with respect to the outer wall, or the, I guess it would be the east wall, where would they sit, the windows?
Um, they would sit where the door is currently. Is, is the initial thought, if we would be permitted, um, to recapture the space, we would move, or recapture the space and put them on the existing wall, that would be great, but I think, uh, we've all discussed that we could just put them exactly where that door is and just, you know, replace like for like.
If you can scale your plans, where would a ten foot setback be?
Um, the ten foot setback is actually already depicted on the, um, if I if you, if you see this depth line.
So you're proposing that wall, the outer or the, the easterly most wall from the living space to be right at that ten foot setback line?
Yes, a little bit beyond, but yeah, about an inch.
So that's where you would propose, if we did a window, you'd propose it to be there?
If we propose the window, yes, we would suppose to be in that wall still beyond the ten foot setback for the rear yard.
Okay, and then if we, if the balcony was proposed in the front, whether we're under the new or the old ordinance, that would be permitted? And we would put it at a location that would comply with both side and front yard setbacks, correct?
Yes, we would, we would put it directly in the center below these existing windows in a very similar configuration after what is on the rear.
So I, I, I have spoken with my clients and they would be amenable to have the plans revised to remove that rear balcony, um, and instead construct that balcony in the front in a conforming, fully conforming condition under even the, the new ordinance.
Understood.
Thank you. I have new questions for Mr. Connor, other than that.
Okay, Mr. Connor, take it down, please. Any more questions in the board or the, uh, general public? Continue, Mr. Beckman.
Thank you, Mr. Kishuba?
Good evening.
Evening, you are a licensed engineer in the state of New Jersey?
Licensed engineer and licensed planner, yes.
I was gonna, next question was, are you licensed planning state of New Jersey?
Yeah.
What are your license, have you ever testified in Bradley?
Uh, I don't believe I had the pleasure.
Okay, have you testified in other boards?
I have, certainly.
Uh, how many?
Oh, thirty, forty different jurisdictions, probably.
And you have been qualified as an expert in both engineering and planning?
Yes.
Okay.
So good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As an engineer, can you, uh, describe the site layout as set forth in your variance plan and, um, if you want, I can probably share it?
Uh, if you'd like to, sure.
Yeah. Just took a little while for me to get it up last time. Okay, I think this is your variance plan, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. You need me to enlarge anything, let me know, but if you could just describe what's being proposed on the site?
Certainly, so, uh, as you can see, we have the footprint of the existing home, uh, in the bottom left hand corner, existing conditions uh, of note, uh, the, in the center of the page is the proposed condition, and you'll see that the footprint remains the same as has been testified by both the owner and the architect. Uh, the changes to the footprint on the ground floor are primarily just that, uh, expansion of a stair tower towards the front. Uh, as the architect had testified, that stair tower on the ground floor sits behind, uh, the existing piers. Um, behind the fifteen foot front yard setback, uh, and the remainder of the expansion upward is all within the footprint of the existing dwelling. Uh, the other notable features here are, we are removing a substantial amount of impervious coverage on the property. Um, somebody went a little concrete crazy on the, uh, property and, um, the entire, almost the entirety of the property is a slab surrounding the whole back of the, uh, dwelling inside, uh, as well as the patio, uh, on the, the right hand side, so uh, the applicant is looking to eliminate the majority of that impervious coverage to bring it down, uh, within, uh, conforming levels. Uh, but also, um, install two driveway strips, um, in order to provide parking onsite, which doesn't exist there today.
Uh, so Beckman, could you make the park that bigger, please?
Sure. Yep.
That spot.
So currently, uh, the, the property is fully curved across the front, has a white picket fence, uh, that would be removed, a, a concrete uh, curb apron will be put in to allow for access, and we provide, uh, two parking stalls. The, uh, the intent with providing the driveway strips again is to, to provide the benefit reduction of impervious as much as we could. Um, the, the area there is a little over thirty-seven feet in depth, uh, which is more than sufficient to park two vehicles where no, no off-street parking is provided today. Uh, there was a note in the board engineer's, uh, review letter indicating the width of a driveway is required at eight feet. Uh, we can certainly increase those strips six inches each, uh, wide, right now it's seven feet wide to the outside. We can increase that to eight feet, uh, and still remain compliant with impervious and then comply with the driveway width requirement. Uh, the apron, uh, complies with the width requirements, uh, and as, again, the parking, we're providing two parking stalls where none exists today. Uh, the two, two bedroom units by ordinance are required, uh, uh, would be required to have two parking stalls each. Again, it's an existing condition, now there's two units on the site today, four bedrooms, uh, so four stalls would be required. Uh, we're taking care of at least two of the, the deficiency by providing parking here on, onsite rather than, uh, uh, relying purely on on-street parking.
So with respect to the parking, what you would be, what you would propose, instead of a two foot strip, it would be a thirty, a thirty inch or two and a half foot strip, correct?
Correct.
And that will still meet the side yard setback for parking, correct?
Correct.
Uh, and, and you said it's about thirty-seven, uh, feet deep?
Correct.
So you'd be adding about thirty-seven square feet to the overall impervious coverage?
Correct.
Which amounts to a percentage and a half, give or take?
Uh, give or take, yeah, uh, we're currently, we're, uh, we're proposing an impervious coverage of fifty-one point three two percent, we're sixty permitted. So, uh, we, we'd still be well under the, uh, uh, max on permit.
Okay. Um, with respect to this neighborhood, is there any property that the owners can acquire in order to make the lot size more conforming?
Unfortunately, no, in the R one zone, five thousand square feet required, uh, the surrounding lots do not have uh, excess land to give up, the, the largest lot is the lot immediately north, uh, which is the church lot, which is fully developed. Uh, so no, there, there's no, uh, ability to remedy, uh, the lot area condition.
And I'm going to bring you over on your plan here, um, to the, uh, tax map. Uh, so you point to the subject right here?
Yes.
And if you could just show the flow of, of the block, uh, with respect or the, the circular respect around this lot?
Uh, certainly, so starting with the property immediately north lot one is the church property, contains the church and, uh, and a dwelling. Um, south of the church is lots eighteen and nineteen, uh, those are both fifty foot lots, fronting on Brinley. Uh, they both contain two dwellings, a front and a rear dwelling. Um, there's the corner lot, uh, lot twenty, uh, which is a single family dwelling on an undersized lot, uh, fifty by sixty-seven. Uh, the lot immediately south, uh, as the applicant had testified, is very similar to this property, fronting on, uh, the street on Madison, and it's thirty-three by fifty, uh, it's very typical on the north south streets of Madison in particular to have lots that are fifty feet deep, uh, uh, the interior lots up front on Madison. Um, looking across the street, uh, starting at the top lot fourteen is a single family, uh, but the, many of the lots be below that south are, uh, multifamily, so the lot sixteen across the street, which is equivalent in size, uh, fifty by fifty lot is a two-family, uh, multifamily dwelling. Uh, the lot immediately south of that, lot seventeen is equivalent in area, it's a twenty-five hundred square foot lot that contains two dwellings, a front and rear dwelling as the applicant had testified to. A lot eighteen has a single family dwelling on it. And lot nineteen point oh three, uh, is half the size of this lot and has a single family dwelling on it. Uh, the remainder of the lots, uh, fronting on Brinley, uh, all have, uh, single family dwellings. Uh, it continuing, uh, within the block, there's several other, uh, properties that contain multiple dwellings on a single lot. Uh, in block forty-one, specifically lots four, five, twelve, thirteen, seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen, all have two dwellings. Uh, there's the condo property at the northeast corner that has, uh, six units. Uh, and the church property has both the church structure and a dwelling on it, so it is pretty typical, uh, in this block uh, to have more than one unit or dwelling on the property, so there's twenty-two lots here, other than the lot in question. Uh, nine of them have, uh, more than one dwelling or unit.
And being that this is a church, um, have you ever, have you driven by the property at all? Have you identified the parking at the property when you've driven by?
Uh, yes, so there, there are no, um, accesses to the property, or I'm sorry, no, uh, other driveways along uh, Madison in this area, um, so that there is no parking, uh, on the property.
In Madison, it's pretty typical, the middle of the block to have lot sizes similar to what's, what's proposed or what exists, I should say.
Uh, most certainly, um, specifically you look south of the property, uh, many of those lots, uh, in between Brinley and fifth, uh, have, uh, lots that are twenty-seven by fifty to twenty-five by fifty. Uh, there's several on that side, uh, on the, uh, west side of Madison, uh, in the block south, there's, uh, fifty foot deep lots. Uh, the same exists, uh, north of the property, um, so it, as I indicated, pretty typical on Madison, that fifty foot deep lots uh, in this surrounding area for those interior lots, the, the corner lots obviously, they in many cases face the east west streets.
And we do have a variance that's being proposed relative to the front yard setback.
Um, correct.
How does that relate to the dwellings on the, in the block, on, on that same side of Madison?
Uh, so we did take a look at that, uh, the, the outlier here is the church, the church is set back, uh, substantially uh, from the right away compared to the rest of the properties. Right note here. So we, uh, uh, the lot immediately south was surveyed, is on, is shown on our property, that front yard setback and the property immediately south is ten point two feet, uh, this property is, uh, again, uh, as per our variance plan, we're, uh, has a front yard setback of fourteen point three. Uh, the property on the corner, um, on the corner of Brinley, uh, has a front setback of about twenty feet. Uh, that was estimated, uh, uh, we measured it ourselves and in the field was not, uh, we did not submit a specific survey. Um, but, uh, we, we measured from the curb, uh, to estimate what that, uh, setback is, and the church is about twenty-two. Uh, so the average in the block, if you don't count the church, is about fifteen, uh, feet. It's more typical in the blocks north and south to be much closer, we, we also took a look at those, uh, setbacks and uh, south of the property, the block south of Brinley, the front setback there averages somewhere around seven feet. Um, and then, uh, the block north of Lorena, the front yard setback there is somewhere on six feet. Uh, so it's, uh, um, it does get rather close, uh, on some of these properties. Uh, and the, uh, the front yard setback here, um, again, the property immediately south is at, uh, ten point two. Uh, so as far as the streetscape is concerned, or the visual impact of the front yard setback, and we're keeping in mind with what's there today. It also does not look at a place compared to, uh, uh, the other properties, as there's a property forward to this, immediately south. And, and the church property, um, again, not being a dwelling being set further back, doesn't really, uh, create a, uh, a corridor streetscape.
As far, as far as that front yard setback, uh, it's proposed to be fourteen point four nine?
Uh, it is, uh, the, the front yard setback, the house isn't perfectly, uh, parallel to the street, so it, uh, the front right is about two feet, two inches further back than the front left.
So actually, so it's fourteen point four three then?
Correct, correct, and that's just at the stair tower, everything else is pre-existing, uh, the stair tower is the area where we're and, you know, exacerbating going above that wall, uh, and the depth dimension there is fourteen point four three, where fifteen is required.
Okay, and again, you heard the architect, as far as to the left of the stair tower, which I'm pointing to here, that's going to remain the same existing as it is today, and above that's only going to be roof line, correct?
Correct.
Let's talk about, uh, a little bit more about parking and, and the, uh, the advantage of what's being proposed as opposed to what's existing.
Uh, certainly, so, uh, again, the, the parking requirement for the, uh, uh, structure is four parking stalls, that's an existing condition and the proposed, again, we're not increasing bedrooms, um, and by ordinance, it's based upon a unit count, uh, again, two, two vehicles per unit. Uh, so in both cases, the, the parking demand does not increase, uh, but we are providing on-street, or off-street parking here uh, to the benefit of the neighborhood, um, where none exists, providing, you know, getting some of those cars off of the street.
Okay. Any other thing that you want to add from an engineering standpoint with what's being proposed?
Uh, the, the building covered again is matching, uh, what was, uh, what exists, forty-two point nine two percent. Uh, where thirty-five is permitted, um, and the architect had gone through all the setbacks, uh, and, and requirements. Um, so from an engineering standpoint, no, I believe we've covered everything, I think the only thing we didn't mention was we are proposing a, a small walkway out to the sidewalk uh, in front of the house.
And, uh, you heard the testimony from the architect regarding the rear that, and, and And uh you heard the testimony from the architect regarding the rear that a- and the client, I I've indicated has agreed to remove that balcony from the rear and replace that back wall with a uh with um windows at that approximate ten foot line?
Yes, I did hear that testimony. I think that uh certainly could, uh it does not exacerbate any variances we're requesting and uh uh impacts uh obviously the the privacy uh behind. So I think it's certainly a matter of fact.
Okay. I have no other questions for Mr. Kishuba from the standpoint of engineering. I think I'd se- I'd prefer to separate engineering from planning.
I have a question. What are the sizes of the parking spaces? And when the cars are parked, what is the setbacks?
Uh so the sizes of the parking spaces, there'll be eight feet from outer edge of concrete to outer edge of concrete uh and eighteen feet deep. Uh and the the setback, we would set that in slightly more than what we have it now to have a five foot setback.
They're gonna have five foot setback, eighteen feet of parking spaces?
Uh well, it, five foot setback left to right and then eight feet of driveway.
Eight feet of driveway?
Correct. Maybe it'd be best to bring up the planning, right? Actually, I can share my screen so I can
Okay.
Show me a cursor.
Slay the driveway out with the, with everything. I may be reading it wrong.
This, highlighting, this is the driveway.
So it's back to backs?
Back to back. It would have a five foot setback and we would increase it to be eight feet wide.
And the line is thirty, is eight, is thirty six feet? Is that to the sidewalk?
Uh it's the property line.
Where is the property line?
Uh right here, behind the, probably three feet behind the sidewalk.
I- in the property or on the other side of the sidewalk?
No, on the prop. Both stalls will be completely on the property, three feet beyond the sidewalk.
Okay. All right. Any other questions?
Mr. Kishuba, just, just to be clear, the the driveway apron pretty much ends at the property line, correct?
Correct.
And then it starts the s- the the strips?
That's correct.
That helps, Mr. Rosenberg.
And the sidewalk is out here.
Okay, that's, I went on, went on to cars hanging out with backs.
Correct.
Uh and Mr. Chairman, in addition to that, that um the door swing on the, on the cars have plenty of room because you still have three feet to the house and you have plenty of room on the other side. So in effect, the driveway maybe eight feet from edge to edge, but there's plenty of room for operation for people to get in and out of the car safely. And it doesn't increase the uh impervious coverage on the property.
Any other questions on the board?
Aubrey, I have one question, Mr. Chairman.
Go.
On the engineering report, eight, it says the parking is conforming. It doesn't mention anything about variance. And it should have four parking spaces for this pro- for this project.
So I can respond to that. Uh in in the report, it should have said that four onsite spots are required.
Okay.
Uh and that was made known to the applicant verbally.
Alright.
So, so four spots are required because it's a two-family.
Yep.
And they currently have none, so it's existent, it's an existing non-conformity.
Okay.
Okay. So they're gonna be proposing now two, which just makes the non-conformity better, so it's not a variance.
My way. Come my way.
Alright.
Cause it's an exist, if they're proposing it to a second family, then it would be a variance. It already exists now as a two-family home with no parking onsite.
Okay.
What they're proposing, if it's approved, would be two parking spaces onsite, which is better than
None.
None. There you go.
Okay.
But in, you're correct. In my letter, it should have said four onsite required, not two.
Alright, just to put more housekeeping then.
Yep, no problem.
Any other questions on the board?
I have a question.
Debbie?
The um curb cut doesn't currently exist, correct?
That's correct.
So in effect, we're really only gaining one parking spot because we're losing one spot on the street.
Alright, so I can answer that. Um you know, as the borough engineer, we encourage this type of thing. Uh twelve feet is a half a spot technically, and depending on how people park, you know, you don't park up nose to nose along the street. So technically, you could maybe say that twelve feet would lose one spot. Maybe no, no spots, depending on how people are parking. But the benefit to having two onsite parking is much better than, you know, and losing twelve feet of curb space is better than not having anything onsite and keeping the twelve feet.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Just, just in perspective.
Anybody else in the public? Mr. Khan?
Mr. Chairman, before we go to the public, I forgot to ask um one thing of my client and and I know Mr. Frida will appreciate this too. Section four in Mr. Frida's report, Mr. um Kishuba?
Yes.
Are there any dish, any issues with uh those compliance conditions?
No.
Okay. So those can all be placed on the plan without any concerns?
Correct.
Thank you.
And to speak to item A, we will provide a grading plan that shows that all runoff will run towards Madison.
Mr. Cohen?
Uh Thomas Cohen, six twelve Third Avenue. Uh Mr. Kishuba, just to stay on the engineering, um on page uh five of Mr. Frida's letter, item three, uh it says in accordance with section four fifty dash forty one, no driveway less than twenty feet in length shall be permitted as measured from the property line. Wouldn't you not need a variance for those two spaces as they're undersized?
Uh no, they they're not undersized. So it says no driveway less than twenty feet length. Our driveway is longer than twenty feet.
Oh, okay. Great. Um a- and then it goes on to say that um the applicant is proposing a driveway length of seventy five feet, which conforms. Um, do you know where that seventy five feet comes in?
That's a mistake on our letter. Thank you.
Okay, um, um, Mr. Kishuba, um, if this was a single family house, how many parking spaces would you need?
By ordinance, two.
So if this was a single family house, you wouldn't need the variance for the other two spaces, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Great. Thank you. And you're gonna come back for planning, sir?
I am, yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other questions in the public?
I'm not seeing any hands raised.
Okay. Um, Ms. Edbert?
Hey, good.
You gotta unmute, dear.
I am. Thank you.
Lauren, e- each time.
I'm sorry for the feedback. I'm struggling here.
Lauren, each time you have to state your name.
I am wondering if the engineer has some idea of what the sound the entire
Lauren, stop.
system and all the mechanicals sitting on that um on that shed. And if there might be some idea also of what kind of screening might be um usable there and what that would look like?
Uh, excuse me, if I can, this is Jerry.
But before you do, Jerry, Jerry, Lauren, every time you 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 get called up for a question, your name and your address each time. Okay?
Thank you for reminding me, Lauren Edbert, four and a half Brinley Avenue. And like
So if I could, if I could, um I also have a a question of the architect when we get back after the planner's done about that same question. So maybe we can wait until or whether Mr. Beekman wants to have him answer the question now or wait till after the planning, but I have a similar question as Ms. Edbert.
I, I have no problem with him answering the question now. I think the question was uh the location of the me- mechanical equipment, the the condensers and uh screening?
Yes.
So.
Yes, and my question's really to the architect, not the engineer.
I understand that, I understand that. I just, before, I I'll allow the architect to um answer that question, but at the same time, there are regulations that we must comply with the ordinance. And this board's uh limitations are related to zoning issues, setbacks and those things, and he has already testified that it will be, they will be placed in a location that will conform to the setbacks. Uh but Mr. O'Connor, if you can answer the question, or what type of screening you think would be appropriate?
So wait a minute, wait a minute, if I could just ask now, because the engineer gave testimony, I'm looking at his plot plan. I see the gas service goes up to the house on the left-hand side. Um, you're proposing mechanicals on the right-hand side. So we really got to get together on this. Is there a basement on this house? There's been no testimony on that. Uh, somebody's got to come up with a plan here because it's not gonna work the way it's done now.
So, Mr. Connor, the Avenue, correct?
No, the gas service to the house, if you look on the engineer's plan, it comes from Madison Avenue and it comes to the left side of the house. The left front.
Gas is also shown uh on these, on the engineering plan, the variance plan, and then it's in Madison Avenue.
Yeah, I understand it. But how are you gonna get two mechanicals on top of the little flat roof from the other side of the house? That's what I need to know. Either the engineer or architect can answer that.
As we discussed with Val, I believe we are using um, I I'm sorry, I believe we're using electric?
Yeah, so
Yeah.
Um in Jeff, maybe you can speak to it since you've, you've done it with your office, but it's a Mitsubishi. It's electric and air conditioning all in one. Um so the units actually just hang in the house. They don't even go out a window. Um and then, so it's very energy efficient because honestly, we don't even have gas in this house right now um at all. So if if, you know, you want us to stick with pure electric, we'll stick with pure electric and we can nix the gas fireplaces because that's a luxury. Um and then I don't, we don't even have to talk about gas because everything could just be the electric systems that I've already got quotes for.
And that, that's fine. Do you have a basement in the house or no?
No, we do not. It's on a
Okay, I was just, so it's on a, it's on a slab?
Correct.
Okay. I know, that helps me because eh now, once we get the testimony of the engineer, it kind of conflicts with putting, you know, you don't need units, condenser units and stand on top of that um storage area, because if you're gonna use the Mitsubishi units, they don't need that.
Well, what my, the HVAC
They have an exterior unit, Jerry.
They have a condenser, yes. There is a condenser that has to go on the outside, but with another option that the HVAC company did recommend is to um hang them from the side wall where the driveway would be, but off the ground. And that's what he was gonna do if we weren't doing this renovation, because we were gonna redo the so even if we weren't doing that, we were gonna try to put those in. That's why we
Okay, so, so I guess what the board needs to understand then is, um you know, those are things a little bit out of our purview. Um and they have to be approved by the construction department during construction. Um but I guess the testimony then would be that everything would be within the building envelope and not in the setback area.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Answers a lot of questions. Mr. Cattelli?
Uh are are these units like heat pumps, where where you're getting both heat and air conditioning out of the same unit?
Yes, correct. Yes.
Okay.
They have them at Darcy's. I noticed at Darcy's. I don't know if anybody goes to Darcy's, but they have them up because I didn't know what they look like. Um, yeah, so they're nice because it's not, you don't have to look at a window unit.
They're, they're more common in southern areas, but uh I had property in Plainsboro which had uh heat pumps in them.
Is it a heat pump or is it a mini split?
I think she's talking about a mini split system.
Yeah.
Anybody, anybody else on the board? Anybody again from the public? Nobody from the board, nobody from the public. Continue to speak, man.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Kishuba, you're back on. Change your hat, put on your planning hat.
Got it.
All right, so um going through the existing home, what we're proposing, is it any significant change to what's existing today in your opinion as a planner?
Uh no, yeah, obviously it is an expansion uh by definition because we are adding the half story. But the impacts to the neighborhood and the the impacts to the uh existing non-conformities are are slight at best. So the, the front yard setback variance that we're violating is about six inches, I think it's seven inches. Uh and it's only the width of the stair tower, uh less than eleven feet at the center of the property. Uh and in my opinion, you know, uh fairly de minimis and and the variance can be granted. I'll get into uh the reasons for that truly, but uh to answer your question, no, I don't believe there's any uh substantial expansion here. Uh the the raising of the roof uh will not have a substantial uh visual impact, not have a impact on air light and open space. Uh sticking within the box that we were given uh in in every chance uh that we could.
And with respect to the one proposed change regarding the rear and the balcony, is that more beneficial um to the zone plan?
Uh yeah, so obviously impact to the public good is uh one of the uh negative criteria we need to take a look at. And obviously, the impact to privacy and overlooking someone's backyard uh is a substantial concern. So I I think eliminating that certainly, uh you know, uh eliminates that that particular concern and is a benefit.
Okay. And with respect to proposing uh off-street parking, uh even though we are losing approximately twelve feet for the curb cut, what's your opinion as to benefit of that uh specific feature being proposed?
Uh that is most certainly uh uh benefit to the general welfare, especially uh in a borough like Bradley where parking is, you know, a very high premium. Um so it is certainly a benefit to planning to uh provide that.
And with respect to what's being proposed of the, of the change of the floor plans, um where the existing is four bedrooms in two units, two bedroom seats, and then proposed is a one-bedroom unit and a three-bedroom unit, uh what is your opinion as to the benefit or detriment of that specific condition?
I believe it's certainly a benefit or at least certainly not a detriment, by keeping the bedroom count the same and the parking uh deficiency uh being improved. Uh we're certainly lessening the impact upon the borough, lessening the impact upon the surrounding property uh and providing a a benefit uh to the general welfare.
And um the ordinance does have some provisions where you're allowed to have um additional units on properties. Is that accurate?
Yes.
And what are, what are those, uh what's permitted within the ordinance for those types of situations?
Uh within the ordinance, they do allow an accessory garage apartment, uh where an eight hundred square foot garage is permitted, a six hundred square foot one-bedroom unit. Um so i- it is not out of character for the neighborhood to have uh secondary dwellings, uh secondary accessory units on a property or setting multiple dwelling units on a property. Uh as I testified at the beginning of my testimony, that condition exists all throughout the, this block and across the street. Um a- and you know, obviously it's given deference in the ordinance as well, that it is a permitted uh secondary unit.
And um have you had a chance to review the master plan?
Uh I have.
And in your opinion, is what, is what being proposed in line with the master plan?
I I believe it is. Uh obviously, this is a pre-existing two-family unit that we're looking to maintain. It's a a pre-existing non-conforming. Uh the the master plan specifically in the re- uh reexamination report in twenty eighteen uh indicates the, uh you know, single-family character of the borough is a very important asset. The rehabilitation and infill of the housing stock should be encouraged where appropriate while maintaining a character scale and privacy uh of the established residential neighborhoods in the, in the borough. In this particular case, uh this is an established residential neighborhood and this two-family home has existed in that established residential neighborhood and part of the fabric of that for a substantial amount of time. And and I focus mostly on the indication of rehabilitation. Obviously, uh this house is not a looker. Um it's in need of TLC. It's certainly in need of uh a a better um visual uh to the street. It would be a a much bigger benefit to the area uh by this renovation promoting a desirable visual environment uh and benefiting all the neighbors um by doing so. So in my opinion, uh this is in line with the master plan goals, uh maintaining an existing um two-family home by, but also improving and rehabilitating uh that home.
And if nothing was done here as far as this proposal and this was denied and the, and the property stays the way it is today, is there any, uh would there be any change or benefit to the, to the borough uh by letting the property stay as it is to that?
Uh no, the two-family condition would remain. It's pre-existing non-conforming. Uh the impervious coverage would continue to exceed the allowance uh in the uh, in the area. Uh the off-street parking would not be provided. Uh the aesthetic benefits would not exist. So uh certainly this application provides a number of benefits uh as a result of uh the improvements here.
And what is your opinion as to um the difference between the substantial uh detriment as opposed to the benefit as to what's being proposed in this application?
Uh, I, I think the benefit here, uh, specifically in these types of cases and a, a D2 variance expansion of a non-conformity is, uh, uh, a non-conforming use as we look is, is this particularly suitable? Uh, and in my, uh, opinion, it certainly is. The structure's existed for a hundred years as was testified. Um, surrounding lots consist of many multi-dwelling or multi-unit uses. Um, so it's certainly, you know, suitable here, uh, that, that being the benefit as well as all the benefits I just listed to the site. Uh, the aesthetic benefits, the parking benefits, impervious benefit. Uh, regarding the detriments, uh, to, to the site, I, I don't believe there are any substantial detriments here. Um, uh, the proposed, uh, dwelling, uh, consisting of two units, uh, exists there today. There's no added then detriment by continuing that. Uh, the setbacks will remain, uh, as they exist today, uh, with the minimal impact of that stair tower. Uh, and in my opinion, that provides a desirable visual environment. It provides a visual improvement rather than a detriment. Um, it's in line and actually further back than many of the homes, uh, along this block and, uh, north blocks, north and south. Uh, so I don't believe there's any impact to airlight and open space as a result of the application. Uh, the impervious coverage reduction actually improves things, so that's certainly not a detriment. Uh, there's no increase in traffic, uh, uh, so i- in my opinion, and, uh, the, the height that we're requesting is in fact three feet lower than what's permitted. Um, so in my opinion, there's no substantial detriment to the public good here. Uh, regarding substantial detriment in the zone plan or zoning ordinance, uh, as we just discussed, uh, you know, a, uh, garage apartment is permitted, uh, in the R1, so, uh, there are cases where two dwelling units on a property is, uh, permitted by your ordinance. And so I don't believe this does any malice to the ordinance by continuing the two-family condition that's been there forever. Um, the plan will now comply with the impervious coverage, which is a benefit to the zone plan, uh, now being in compliance. And, and we're trying as best we can to comply with the parking, uh, which obviously, as I said, is certainly a commodity, uh, in Bradley. So, uh, I don't believe there's any substantial detriment to the zone plan or zoning ordinance either.
And the fact that there's no land that can truly be purchased to make this property more conforming as far as lot size, um, any opinion on that?
Uh, correct, so that there is no ability to remedy this, uh, as far as the lot area, uh, is concerned. So the hardships, uh, associated with the bulk variances, uh, exist and, and it really cannot be, uh, remedied. Uh, uh, you know, an undersized lot that's also undersized in depth creates a number of hardships, uh, specifically in setbacks and, and the, the rear and front setback are, are no exception there. Uh, it is an undersized lot, uh, uh, that does have hardship.
And what's being proposed by trying to, to keep substantially within the existing footprint, um, eh, is certainly an important consideration for this application to, to move forward and be approved, correct?
I, I would agree with that. The architect and the applicant have made, you know, uh, great strides to try and, like I said, stay within the box, um, while also trying to benefit, uh, you know, aesthetically, uh, and, you know, provide the access to that half-story. Um, so yes, I, I think it's certainly a benefit to planning to try and stay within, uh, the setbacks that have pre-existed for, uh, substantial amount of time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions in the board again? Lauren.
Uh, I saw, I heard that you mentioned that the 32 feet of the height is actually, um, lower than the maximum of 35, but in letter E here in, um, the document from Mr. Frida, it states that not only is the height over the maximum for the size lot, the half-story is also, um, not to code. So I'm wondering if you could just talk about how you came to the conclusion that that was, you know, going with part of the master plan?
Mr. Frida, could you explain?
Yes. Uh, when we drafted the letter, it was, it was, we did it under the new ordinances and that's why letter E states what it does. Uh, because, as was stated earlier, because the applicant, um, made his application before, uh, all of the provisions in the ordinance could be made, we have to do it under the old ordinance, so letter E is struck from my letter. It, it's no longer part of the, uh, it's the old ordinance that governs, not the new one. So I apologize for the confusion.
Uh, thank you.
Anybody else in the board? Anybody in the general public? Mr. Conlon.
Uh, Thomas J. Coann, 612th Avenue. Uh, Mr. Kishuba, um, you said some of these increases are slight at best. Is that what you said?
Uh, I, I said that regarding the front yard setback at the stair tower.
Okay, so, um, increasing the height nine feet, seven and a half inches is, is de minimis. Is, is that your testimony?
Uh, it's permissible. It's, the ordinance allows it. We're actually three feet below the allowable height.
Okay, and, uh, increasing the cubic square footage by 1,693.75 cubic feet, that's de minimis. Is that your testimony?
I, I object to that. That, I don't think that's correct.
Well, it's, it's math. I mean, you're, it's from your architect's information.
I, I, I object. I don't think that's correct.
Also, that was not the testimony of Mr. Kishuba.
Right.
That's a question for the architect.
Okay. Um, so if you testified that, um, there's no, uh, impairment to the intent and purpose of the zone plan, um, are you aware that the zoning was changed, um, and the RT zone was removed? Um, and that was done to, to, uh, to create less density. Were you aware of that?
I, I didn't re- review the RT zone for this as it's located in the R1 zone.
Sure. Okay, um, and then, uh, you testified that there's other houses that have multiple units, um, in that area. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, um, and then if it doesn't impair the zone plan for here, would they then be able to i- increase the size of their non-conformities?
Well, each pro- each project stands on its own merit, so I really couldn't, uh, testify to what other homes could do. I don't know what their setbacks or coverages or anything are.
Okay, um, and then you stated that, uh, that the ordinance allows for, uh, accessory units, did you not?
Accessory garage departments, yes.
And that would be a conforming lot of 5,000 square feet to qualify for the accessory unit. Is that correct?
Uh, I believe so. I'd have to take a look and see if there's a, the area limitation. I don't recall that.
Right, so if you, if you could have the accessory unit, that would put your density at, uh, 2,500 square feet per unit, correct?
Uh, in that particular scenario, yeah.
Okay, and, and what is your square footage per unit?
Uh, it's one unit per 12, 1250.
Right, so it's half as much, right?
Uh, correct.
Okay, so would the most conforming use of this property be a single-family home?
Uh, well, it's actually a pre-existing non-conforming, so, uh, right now it, 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 it doesn't conform with the ordinance, but it pre-existed the order.
But if it was turned into a single-family home, it would be more conforming than what you're proposing. Is that correct?
Uh, it would conform with the single-family requirement, yeah.
Great, thanks so much, sir.
Egbert. You know the rules.
Thank you. Lauren Egbert, 404 and a half, Bringley Avenue. Um, my one, uh, question that I have for the planner is, if I am correct in understanding the standards that have to be met for D2 variance and that they would include that the non-conforming use was lawfully pre-existing. So it wasn't the result of a variance, a D variance to begin with. I think we've got that. Um, the second would be that it will advance the purpose of zoning and then it, it has to be proven by the applicant that it would be done without substantial depre- detriment to, detriment to surrounding properties. And that they, applicant also needs to prove that it will not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zoning plan. Do I have that right?
Yeah, that's all correct. That's all what I've testified to you so far.
Any other questions?
Excuse me, yes, I, yeah, yes. Um, Matt? May I ask another question? May I ask another question? Lauren Egbert, 404 and a half, Bringley Avenue?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. My other question is that, um, you mentioned as the planner that this property was particularly suited for this intended use. Is it your testimony that a 50 by 50 lot is particularly suited to remain a two-family home with variances of other sorts in a neighborhood that is now zoned for only single-family dwellings? Is 50 by 50 a next door to one that's even smaller and all packed in particularly suited for this two-family use to continue?
Uh, in my opinion, the history of it is what proves that it's particularly suited. It has existed there since, you know, the early 1900s, uh, over a hundred years. Uh, so based upon that, I, I do believe it is suited, yeah.
Does it appear to you from the master plan that the intention of the master plan is to remedy those situations and to have those neighborhoods be single-family?
Uh, the master plan doesn't specifically say to remedy those situations. Um, uh, when there's a pre-existing non-conformity, I, I, I don't believe, uh, the applicant is required to remedy that. And, and obviously that's why we're here asking for relief.
I, I'm sorry. I really didn't mean to, to say that it was the intention of the, I'm, I was simply speaking to what the master plan was trying to achieve, not to, to anybody's bad intentions.
Thank you. Any other questions in the public? Beekman? Are you done?
Uh, I don't have any other witnesses, if that's what you're asking.
Right. Any other questions from the board to Mr. Beekman or his witnesses? Any questions from, from the general public? Any comments from the general public?
I had a question, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, go ahead.
Um, for the architect, Mr. Connor.
Give your name and address, please.
Uh, Thomas J. Coann, 612th Avenue. Um, I have a question for Mr. Connor, the, uh, architect. Uh, Mr. Connor, wh- what is the cubic square footage of the building before the improvements? And what is it after the improvements?
I would object to the question only because the ordinance does not speak to the cubic square footage of a property.
Uh, I just, I, I, I disagree, Mr. Ki- Mr. Beekman, because it goes to the expansion of the non-conformity.
Mr. Kitchard, do you want to roll in that question, please?
I, I've never heard that question about cubic feet, never. Um, so, it's, if the archi- but if the architect can answer the question, if he's able to.
I, I made my objection noted.
Made your objection and you're welcome to comment on summation as to the relevance of that.
Yeah, thank you.
Connor, did you come with an answer?
If you say no, it's okay.
Um, I mean, to, current cubic feet, uh, of, the existing, uh, footage or, of the existing house is, uh, 1,000, uh, 17,121 foot point five cubic feet. Uh, can you hear me now?
Now we can.
Okay, um, I, I, we have today, um, the current cubic feet is, uh, 1,000, uh, 17,121.5 cubic feet.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and the proposed would be 18,815, roughly.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Um, well, if we subtract the two, it'd be 1,693.75.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that.
And any other, any other comments from the general public?
Well, I mean, are we questioned still? Are we going to comments from the public?
I said comments.
Oh, sure.
We're done with, we got, you have that extra question. Wait a minute, we're going to comments. We're going to Mr. Devine first.
Sure.
Hi, Bridgette Devane, 313.
You gotta be, now you gotta be sworn in.
Oh.
At 313.
Lorraine Ave.
Right. Raise your right hand, please. You swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth tonight's proceeding.
I do.
Thank you.
I'm, you.
So, uh, my name's Bridgette Devane, 313 Lorraine Ave. Um, I live, uh, just around the corner from this property. Um, you know, I moved into this neighborhood 16 years ago with my husband. We, um, you know, have had two children since then and we had to expand our own house. Um, fortunately, we didn't have to go through this process, so, um, I do not envy anybody who has to go through this. This is my first time ever in a zoning board meeting. Um, but I do, um, my two children walk to school and children walk to school predominantly in this community. My kids walk down this street. They walk by this house every single day, uh, to and from school. And the one advantage of this block is that on this side of the street, which they walk on every day, there are no driveways and I do not have to worry about a car hitting them on this block. Um, and it is a concern because my child, the nurse called me a month ago and said my child had to jump out of the way of a car in this. It's a concern. We have so many kids walking every single day to school, um, and all sort of rec camp in the summertime. It's a walking community. So I do have concerns that, um, this block is very narrow. Um, parking is difficult on that block and I see it all the time. There have been accidents on this block. And it's, it's, it really concerns me about adding another driveway. It adds another dynamic to a safety issue. Um, I also, I don't know the neighbor next door, um, but I would have cons- that adding that parking space and being right up against your home essentially. And I get it that a door can open, but having a car right next to your home changes your living environment. Um, I, I know it because that's the driveway next to me and what I experience, it does change the environment in which you live. So I don't know them, but, um, and I don't know if they have concerns, but when I look at that space, that house is so close to that driveway that it almost feels invasive by adding cars into that space. Now, my other concern around the driveway is that, um, you know, with this being a multifamily residence, um, I, I, I think adding those two spaces is somewhat disingenuous because as most of us know, it, we don't generally park two cars in our driveways. Um, that's a rarity and the, that is not an everyday situation generally, especially considering how tight this driveway is. Um, but I do think the more advan- advantageous thing for this community would be that we reduce the number of cars and by making a single-family residence, you would reduce the number of cars on the street and therefore reducing the strain over the parking. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Mr. Conlon.
Uh, Thomas J. Coann, 612th Avenue.
Mr. Kitchard? Want to swear in?
So, Mr. Conlon. Do you, you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and that's about truth tonight's proceeding?
Yes, I do.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I, I, I did have just an issue with, uh, the letter from Avakian Group, um, on page three, item C. Um, the way it's worded, uh, detriment to the public good, negative criteria, it says, uh, the use would not have substantial detriment on nearby properties. Um, that really doesn't coincide with, uh, 40,055D dash 70, which says without substantial detriment to the public good. So it's not necessarily just about the neighboring properties. It's about the entire public good. The ordinances Uh, the ordinances were written for a reason. And, you know, we've, we've also already established, and I'm going to go through the purposes of zoning right now. So, um, item E under purposes of zoning, that's forty colon fifty-five D dash two. Uh, item C is to provide adequate air, light and open space. Well, this lot is fifty by fifty. As Mr. Kishuba acknowledged, the, uh, density standard is twelve hundred and fifty square feet per unit. Where the ordinance is two thousand five hundred per unit. Um, so, and also the cubic square footage is one thousand six hundred ninety-three point seven five. Cubic square feet greater than what exists now. So it may be four bedrooms. But it's a much bigger building. The roof is, uh, nine feet, seven and a half inches higher. So under purposes of zoning, item C, um, to, to provide adequate air, light and open space. I don't believe this meets the requirement. Uh, item E is to promote the establishment of appropriate population densities and concentrations. Well, again, I don't believe it meets that standard. Um, uh, to provide sufficient space, uh, item G, to provide sufficient space in appropriate locations. For a variety of agricultural, uh, residential, recreational and commercial uses. Well, we've already established the ordinance. There's a reason that this is not a two-family property. Cause it's simply too small. And, uh, item I is to promote the desirable visual environment through creative development techniques. And good civic design and arrangement. Well, I gotta say, it is a nice looking building. But it's a two-family home, so you can put whatever wrapping paper you want on it. It's a very dense property. Uh, also, um, in the two thousand three master plan review. That was prepared, uh, by T and M Associates. Um, the master plan is very specific to say. The proliferation of multifamily and accessory apartment structures is threatening the established characters, character of, of the borough. In addition, some of the new multifamily structures are inconsistent with the scale, massing and intensity. Of surrounding structures. As a result, there is an immediate need for more strict. Uh, to, to more strictly regulate air, light and open space in the borough. So our own two thousand three master plan. I think says it all right there. Um, I think the applicants designed a beautiful house. Um, and the ordinance was changed to actually make it easier for them to build a single-family home on here. Um, I don't believe economics is a reason to grant the variance. If that's the case, this board will be granting variances every, every month. Because everyone's going to say, well, economically I need to do it. Um, the variances go with the land and not with the applicant. So their living arrangement is, is good for them, but does not really meet the, the requirements of the zone, in my opinion. And, um, I believe they can create a wonderful single-family home in here with a driveway that parks two cars. And everyone can be happy and I believe.
So I'm just gonna in- in- interject here. It's not just you saying it, but I think the other, um. Mr. Devane also said that the application before the board is not for a single-family home. That's not the application. So it's not relevant.
And, and I'm stating, I'm stating that, that I believe a single-family home is a higher.
Uh, you, you, you interrupted me.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So it's not relevant, a discussion about single fa- a single-family home. That is not the application. That's not what's being proposed. Now, the board, the board, the board can, can accept the application. Uh, as presented or obviously not, you know, and not approve the application. But there's no proposal before this board for a single-family development. That's not before the board.
Uh, Mr. Kifig, what I'm saying is that the current density standard is better if it's a single-family home. And Mr. Kishuba has admitted that the, in his testimony, that the requirement right now in the ordinance is twenty-five hundred square feet. This is twelve hundred square feet per unit.
The application before the board is not for a single-family use.
I, I really.
It's not the application.
And there's no economic hardship either. That's, that's my point. There's no economic hardship.
That's a different argument.
Okay, well, that's, that goes to it. They're saying they need this apartment for the economics. I don't believe economics is a reason to grant a variance or everyone would want a variance. But, um, thank you very much. I appreciate.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. You have five minutes, Row. Anybody else in the public? MS. You gotta unmute, state your name and address and be sworn.
Yes, okay, hi. I'm Karen, Karen Jardine, six zero two Madison Avenue. I am the next-door neighbors on the south.
You gotta be sworn in.
Swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth tonight's proceeding?
I do.
Thank you.
Okay, I am the next-door neighbors on the south side. And I'm very glad to see any improvement on the home. But my concern, I do have, and I'm feeling a lot of anxiety over this, ever since I got this variance letter. Um, there's a chain link fence, their fence, that is five and a half inches from my house, the house itself. I can't even get in there to clean or maintain the north side of my house. My walkway, and now my house is on the ground, it's on a slab and it's ground level. So meaning my front door is right there. Next to theirs. My walkway and my door is right inches from this fence. My living room window is inches from this fence.
Of course.
Now, when these cars, if, if they're allowed to be parked here. What I'm going to be seeing when I leave or enter my house is these cars. When I look out that window, I'm going to be seeing a car. Um, all right, I'm just a little, little, um, excited here. Now, you speak, you speak about the parking. I've been in my home for forty-five years. I grew up in Bradley Beach, so I know all about the parking. On weekends in the summer, okay, you're talking ten weekends. It's a bit of a challenge, a bit, but we find parking. By Sunday afternoon, all of the daytime visitors are gone. It's freed up and there's no parking, I, no problem with parking for the rest of the week. And of course, Labor Day to Memorial Day, there is no problem with parking. So it's not a critical situation on our street. And no, I do not want to see the curb cut and I do not want to see those cars right next to my house. So I, this is what I'm looking at all the time. Mr. Kishiba, I don't know if I'm saying that correctly. You talk about aesthetic benefit. There's no aesthetic benefit for me if this parking occurs. Um. And I do believe also you speak, um, I think Ms. Egbert and Mr. Cohen both spoke about substantive detriment. I do believe that this is a substantive detriment to me. And my quality of life is going to be diminished. So I'm asking you, please do not allow that to happen. The parking and the curb cuts. And also, uh, from my point of view too, as. You are just, you're taking away a public parking place on that street. They're only putting one car, you can only count one car that's going to be off the street.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'm sorry, can I ask Ms. Jardine a question?
Yes, you may.
Thank you. Ms. Jardine, I, I didn't understand your concern about the fence. Can you explain that?
As a guide to show you how close our properties are. That's, I'm just using that so you can see, you can visualize that when I cut my walkway and my front door and my window. It's right there at that fence. That's how close I am and how close I'm going to be to these cars. And also, I'm outside working all the time. I have a garden, I have flowers. I, if those two cars to me, I'm going to be smelling oil and gas. Not, I'm not going to be smelling my flowers.
But your dwelling doesn't comply with the setback, correct?
Uh, my dwelling, I've lived there for forty-five years, so it is.
But it doesn't comply with a, with the.
It's got to do with what they need to comply with. I'm not asking for a variance, sir.
But you're set, you're saying that you're going to see the cars because your prop- your, your current dwelling is immediately adjacent to the property lot.
Yes, yes.
That has. So do you understand that the proposed, that, that the driveway that's proposed is a fully conforming driveway according to the ordinance?
And I'm asking you to consider that this is going to be right in my face. That's what I'm.
I'm, I'm asking you a question. Do you understand that the driveway? Ms. Jardine, it's my turn to ask questions.
Well, you're interrupting me. I'm trying.
No, I.
No, all right, so first of all, first of all, you testified what you're certainly entitled to do, which you've done.
Are you speaking to me now?
Yes, I'm speaking to you. So you, you, that's why, that's why you're placed under oath, you gave testimony.
Yes.
The applicant's attorney has the right to, in fact, cross-examine you once you've given your direct testimony.
Gotcha, okay. Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Kitcher. So Ms. Jardine, do you understand that what, that the driveway that is proposed, it is fully conforming? With what's required under the ordinance?
I understand. I understand that this.
And do you understand?
For, I understand that they are applying for this variance and now it, I have the right now to voice my objections.
You, you do. You're absolutely right. But do you also understand that the ordinance requires a driveway? For the, uh, single-family zone?
I, I hear what you're saying.
So.
I ask, I beseech the board members to understand what my situation is.
I, I, I totally understand, but we're not asking, and I just want to make sure you realize, we're not asking for a variance related to the driveway.
But it hasn't, there hasn't been one since I've lived there for forty-five years. There hasn't been one. So now all of a sudden, it's, they're required to do this?
I, I understand. It's part of the application. One other question I have. Do you have a problem with the chain link fence?
Well, I, to tell you the truth, it's, it's forty, it's been there since I've been there and it's deteriorating and it's falling apart.
So if it was taken down, you wouldn't have.
Would it matter if I had an objection or not about that fence?
Well, if, I'm just asking, if it was taken it down, would there be an issue if it was taken down?
My issue right now is with the, the parking of two cars on that lot. And by the way, one car will be in their front yard.
Again, you understand that's permitted?
I just am making this aware, making everyone aware of what I aesthetically am not going to be benefiting by.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Ms. Orbert, Ms. Law- Law- Lauren. Lauren, unmute, be sworn in. Uh, Mr. Kitchridge.
Okay. So, uh, I just need your address, Lauren.
That's what I was about to give.
I, I understand.
Lauren, four, four and a half, Brunley Avenue.
I could, you broke up a little bit.
Lauren Egbert, four, four and a half, Brunley Avenue.
Okay, do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth tonight's proceeding?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Um, the, um, I, you know, I walk that town, um, and that, that part of town all the time. It's very close to my house. The neighbors live very, very close together. Um, there, what, what's done on one property affects another one tremendously. Uh, what is being asked here is to, you know, when, is to not only. Is to increase density and potentially increase it a lot. Um, right now, the use that's described may keep it more or less the same. But once you have more space like that, particularly in today's environment where there's all kinds of ways to rent for weekends, to rent for months, to. This can certainly change. Now, when you're talking about a old. Curating home, which, which, which has now a pre-existing, non-conforming, non-permitted use. I think the hope is that when it comes time for substantial changes. Changes that will, will be made that are in furtherance of the master plan. And are reducing density and are increasing air and light. I, and I can tell you, it looks like an aesthetic improvement to some people, but to those of us who walk around. Town, great big tall buildings feel like they're going to tumble over on you. And what it, what a building looks like depends so much on where it is. Um, as the board approved one several years ago on Atlantic Avenue, it looked fabulous in the pictures. And when it went up, it was a whole different story. Um, it's hard for me to imagine something towering in that fashion on that spot. And when you talk about detriment to the public good, although then this application doesn't need a variance. Because it doesn't comply with the height for that size property, because it's, it got in right before that was done. I think that, that the, the fact that the town changed that ordinance. To not allow that height on that property is because the town perceived that that was a detriment to the town overall. To allow that height on that size of a property. So, you know, I, I do not think, you know, I, I have great sympathy with the applicants and their proposed use. Um, I just think that it's going to be a terrible detriment to neighbors that are squashed that close together. And I don't think that backing out in all that density on, um, on such a narrow street is going to be a net gain either. And, and neighbors have expressed that that's not what they care about. I will also state that in our neighborhood, there are people with full driveways. I don't see them parking in their driveway, at least even on the weekend. What, what they generally do is they park on the road to preserve their driveway in case they have guests. And a few times they do and lots of times they don't, but they just stay on the street, like first come, first served. So the neighbors are the ones who know how they handle. Driving and parking. So I would submit that this does create a substantial detriment. And that depriving the town of the possibility of seeing this property evolve according to the master plan. Also does damage to the master plan.
Thank you. Jane De Noble.
Good evening, Jane De Noble, six twelve, Third Avenue.
Be sworn in.
You swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth tonight's proceeding?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
So as a member of, of the for- a former member of the planning board, I know the master plan well. And I know the, the, the purpose and the, and intent of it is to protect people. Like Mrs. Jardine, to protect her air and to protect her light. This building is much larger and she talked about her garden. Her garden won't get the air and light that it has originally, because it'll be blocked by this new building. It's not so much the density, it's the intensity that's increasing. And this is why we want to see things like this kind of phase out. We don't want to improve upon them because it continues the life. And that's what the master plan is about, protecting the people that are here already. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else in the public? Mr. Anybody else?
Not seeing any hands raised.
Beckman, it's back to you.
Thank you, Chairman Rosenberg. So in, in summary, in closing, uh, we are asking the board to approve this application as it is proposed. With the change that the balcony will be removed from the rear. Uh, windows will be replaced at that location, that's approximately at that ten-foot line. Uh, and a proposed conforming balcony, uh, to be, uh, constructed in the front. Um, fully conforming with the ordinance requirements, whether you look at the old ordinance or the new ordinance. Uh, but I want to be clear about something with the board is that. This application has been submitted under the old ordinance, uh, prior to the change. So there shouldn't even be any consideration for any reason under the new ordinance. Right now, we have an existing two-family dwelling with four bedrooms. No off-street parking, impervious coverage that exceeds what is allowed. And a building footprint that is what it is. What is being proposed. Uh, is what would be considered a fully conforming. Whether you had a single-family or a two-family dwelling, fully conforming. It meets the height requirements. It meets the two and a half-story requirements under the ordinance that, that's applicable. Uh, we are proposing, um, uh, the, uh, a new curb cut and driveway. That minimizes the existing non-conforming condition as far as parking spaces. Uh, again, a benefit, and it's not a variance condition that's being proposed, uh, for that situation. Uh, there is a variance condition that is being proposed from the standpoint of bulk variances related to the stair tower. Uh, there has been significant testimony that this is a de minimis, more or less architectural feature. That sits approximately six or seven inches, um, uh, in front of what would be the setback. When you have a, uh, church to the north and you have a, uh, fully non-conforming property. When it comes to both side yard and, and rear yard set, or. when it comes to both side yard and, and rear yard set, or I'm sorry, side yard and front yard setbacks to the south. Uh, and, and what's being proposed will really substantially comply with the setback, uh, requirements. The architect indicated that the roof lines will begin where the existing roof li, roof lines, um, begin. So there's no exacerbation of any of the existing conditions. So when it comes to air light, um, and those concerns, this is a fully conforming situation that our applicant is proposing. When it comes to the driveway, again, the ordinance requires when you're developing property in Bradley Beach that there be a driveway. We're proposing a driveway and we're mitigating an existing condition. This is necessary and the driveway that's proposed again is conforming. It is going to be at least three feet from the side property line. It's going to be at least twenty feet deep. In fact, it's going to, uh, accommodate two cars and be, uh, thirty, approximately thirty-six or thirty-seven feet deep according to, uh, the plans. Uh, it's going to have the minimum lot width. It's going to comply with the curb cut of approximately twelve feet. All of those things are conforming conditions. The, uh, issue is.
Sorry, I'm sorry. Can I interrupt and ask that the man undressing, please go off camera?
It's ridiculous.
Robert West, cut him off, please, Kristin.
Robert West.
Thank you.
And also Lauren, could you put your hand down, please?
Questions are over.
Yeah. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. So, so the comments that, that this is a, uh, that this driveway is creating some kind of a nuisance. I, I, I don't think the board should even consider because we're proposing a conforming condition as to what's required in the ordinance. The comments about cubic square feet, there's nothing in the ordinance that says anything about you have a limited volume or cubic square feet that you're permitted to build. Again, the application as proposed conforms with height. It conforms with the, the number of stories, um, and, and those things. Uh, and, and again, I want to emphasize that it is an existing two-family, two-bedroom, I'm sorry, two-family, uh, with, uh, each unit having two bedrooms. And the change here is a two-family with one unit having one bedroom, which I think is a benefit. The other unit having three bedrooms, uh, which would more be the family unit of someone living there. The property has been a two-family for a long time. It has been rented in the past. Uh, Ms. Uh, Ms. Mrs. Caravan testified that it had been rented in the past by her both units for a number of years. Um, and she will, she plans to continue to do that because she bought this for an economic benefit. It is a two-family. It was a two-family. It was a, even though it's a non-conforming use, that is what it is. We're not proposing a single-family home and we're not proposing to demolish the existing structure that would require an application for a single-family ho, home unless a, a use variance was granted. Uh, yes, we are asking for a use for an expansion of a use, but the testimony is very clear. This truly is not an expansion of the use itself. The use is still two, two units with four bedrooms. Uh, it's only an expansion of the size of the dwelling that does, again, conform substantially other than that's, that stair tower. Um, the other thing that I want to mention is the testimony about density. It's already two units in twenty-five hundred square feet. Again, there's no change here. This is what's being proposed. This is what's existing. No change. Um, we're not sitting on a blank slate coming before you, before the Board of Adjustment asking for a use variance for a two-family when we have nothing on the property currently. So what's being proposed again, it is, uh, not a substantial detriment to the neighborhood. In fact, there's quite a few benefits to the neighborhood that has been testified to, uh, through architectural testimony, through engineering testimony and summarized through, through the planning testimony. Um. So, uh, again, when it comes to the master plan, uh, the things that are being proposed here, we are not, not complying with the master plan. We're keeping the property consistent with what exists today with certain benefits to certain things that the board and the municipality and the commissioners have decided this is what we want as far as our properties. Those being off-street parking. We're providing off-street parking. That's not, not existing today. Uh, we're substantially meeting the setback requirements and, and we're not exacerbating, um, the side and rear yard setback requirements. Um, there is a small architectural feature, uh, that, uh, is the proposed stair tower that, um, is an expansion of the existing non-conformity. But again, that's more of an architectural feature in the central location of the property. It's not located right by the church. It's not located right by, um, Ms. Um, Jardine's, I think it was Ms. Jardine's, um, house to the south. And it's not exacerbating anything to the property in the rear. And in fact, I want to bring to the attention of the board, that property in the rear is, is the very back of another property. So it's not like it's sitting up on a home, uh, another home in that rear as well. So with all of this said and done, the, I, I, I think the board should approve the application. I think the board should approve the variances that are requested by the applicant this evening. Um, we are substantially retaining the existing non-conforming use, uh, based upon the testimony. Um, and one last note I will, I want to point out is, um, the massing or the height of the front of this property, a fifty-foot lot on Madison Avenue that might be fifty by a hundred. This would be a substantially conforming, uh, structure on that lot. Uh, we don't, we're not sitting on a forty or a thirty-five or a thirty or a twenty-five foot lot, which many of the, they are, uh, around the town as well. So the massing of the front of the building is actually very reasonable for a fifty-foot lot, especially considering when you have a setback, uh, from the property to the south that is more than fifteen feet, feet, uh, fifteen feet deep. Uh, when the ordinance would allow, uh, a five-foot setback on one side and a ten-foot setback on the other. Uh, if you look at the combined, we're actually in excess of that with what's being proposed. So with all said and done, I would ask that the board approve this application, um, in its entirety with the, except with, subject to the comments from the board's engineer, uh, and subject to the change with the balcony. Thank you.
Hey, any notes from the, from the board before we do this?
Mr. Advento?
Miss, Mr. Advento.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, um, and please, this is my first time engaging in, in this.
Yeah, but you've been on the planning board. It's similar.
Yes, but in terms of just wanting to see if this is the appropriate time to, to see if we could, uh, if the board can, if we can ask the, the board engineer and the planner to please advise the board based on their own professional oversight. I'm just curious if that's something that is possible.
They do that. We usually don't do.
I would, as the applicant's attorney, I would object at this point. I have my right to do my summation. I think it turns over at this point to the board for deliberation.
Mr. Mayor.
I don't disagree.
Now, I, I'm on with all my, my comments to the time of voting. I have, I have a.
Want to make the, you want to make the motion?
Not really.
Anybody like to make the motion on the board?
Mr. Chairman, there's, there's, as you tell by the, by the pause here, people, nobody wants to commit right now as to which way they're going, but there's so many questions about this application. I understand Mr. Beaker made, this is made a valiant, a very cogent application. But listening to the public comments from the board and everybody's thoughts about the master plan, how it's implemented. We understand this is not a single-family application. It is what it is. But it is what it is now, so it is what it is tomorrow and forever. Is that what we're trying to achieve?
Right, it's hard to digest.
It's, there's a, there's a, the, the pluses and minuses are on both sides, very well spoken and valid in this, and, um, there is one comment, though, the, the economic impact to the applicant is of no concern to us.
Right.
It is no concern. Uh, and I, I, I will take, take a back that, um, I forget the gentleman's name, the planner, uh.
Uh, Mr. Kushebig.
Yes, this, this comment about, this has been, talking about s, s, two homes on one property. Yes, but you forgot one co, one part of it. Unconforming laws. This is not a conforming law. This would never be allowed to have two families, ever. It is two families because that's what it was and that's what it is. And I, and believe me, I have empathy for the app, for the applicant. I know what they're trying to do and, and in their position, it makes sense. But from the planning in Bradley Beach, it's a great design, a normal lot.
Right.
That, that's all I can say. It's, it's my opinion and I want to express it.
I have to agree with Mr. Mr. Mayor. It's very concerning to what we have to decide here. And there, there's too many pluses, there's too many minuses to make it hard for this thing to go forward. I don't know. We can make, we can make a decision. If Mr. Beckman wants us to go forward, we could do that. Take a vote. Want to think about what he wants to might do before, before we start taking a vote? Because once you take a vote, there's no, there's no going back.
Can you give me two minutes to talk to my client?
We'll give you two minutes.
Thank you.
Bye.
Well. Let, let's wait until.
Okay. Cut the recording. Kristi, you could stop the recording for a moment. Okay, Mr. Beckman.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Uh, we're going to ask for the board to carry this matter to next month. I need some time to really sit down with my clients and, uh, let them wrap their heads around all the practicalities, um, and, and what we want to do. So we need to carry it so I can have that opportunity.
Uh, okay, we're in reference to Karen, we're going to have to travel to August because of a major case that we didn't hear tonight. It's probably going to take the whole night. We're going to go on purpose, in person, so you're going to have to renotice.
I shouldn't have to renotice.
Yeah, because we're going from, we're going from, uh, from Zoom to person.
Oh, you'll have, yeah. And, and it would be August.
August.
But if it's in person, you're putting it on the record. It's in person. It's not the other way around.
What did your notice say?
Well, the notice probably said it's a Zoom meeting, but if it's, you're putting it on the record tonight that it's in person.
Not good enough. You, you, you have to renotice.
I, I would, I would like to have opportunity to brief that and at least put it on the record and state my reasons that I shouldn't have to do that. I, I understand, Mark. I, I have to look into it because I really, but I really haven't. But if I have to renotice, I have to renotice. What's the difference? Right?
Right, so why don't you spend your time doing that instead of doing a brief?
No, 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 I, I, I meant for myself.
Okay, that's fine. That's fine, but.
I, I'll make a motion, uh, that we carry the Caravan Residence Block forty-one, lot twenty-two, six oh four Madison Avenue, file number twenty-one dash oh four to the August.
Nineteen.
Nineteenth meeting. With notice.
Well, a, again, I, we're putting on the record, I understand, we're putting on the record that it's the nineteenth, it's at the Borough Hall and it's at six thirty.
Correct.
Correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And you have to re.
Have to notice, but I would like a, a chance to look at that.
Okay.
You, you, Jeff, you're welcome to look at it. But August nineteenth, you have to renotice. That's and if you don't, you won't be on for August nineteenth.
I understand. I'm hearing you. I got, I got the time and the date on the record.
Thank you. Mr. Mr. Karas, we're sorry we can't get to your, uh, case tonight, which is.
I think we change our minds. Just tell them to vote. Unbelievable.
Too late now. Uh, that we, that Mr. Karas, five oh one, oh one Lake Terrace, block seven, lot two oh, two dash oh three, that we carry this meeting to July ninth fifteenth at the Borough Hall in Bradley Beach at six thirty and must be renoticed.
Very good.
You can send to that, Mr. Karas.
What's that?
You can send to that.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and wave all time.
We wave.
And Mr. Beekman, if he's still on, we wave all time as well.
Well, yeah, he, well, he made the request.
Yeah, okay. All right, we're all set. Make a motion. We adjourn and thank you for this long meeting.
Have a good night, everybody.
See everybody in July in Borough Hall.
Come on, have a, a safe and happy fourth.
Thank you, everybody.
Enjoy.
Five oh one Lake Terrace, please come to the meeting on July fifteenth.
Thank you.
Thank you.